All right, it's six thirty, so we'd like to start this business meeting of our band of school District 116. Roll call, please, Sheri. You need your mic on, please.
Member Stanton?
Here.
Here. Member Baxley?
Present.
Member Hassanata?
Here.
Secretary Langendorf here.
Vice President Hexum?
Here.
And President Palowski?
Here. There will be a few modifications to tonight's agenda. We would like to bring Section seven dot zero and Section nine dot zero up before citizen statements. And then there's a few items that'll be pulled from tonight's agenda. The minutes from the May ninth District Facilities Committee meeting will be pulled from Section eleven dot one. And Action Item twelve dot four will also be removed from tonight's agenda.
And moved to Tuesday.
Right, and that will be later on at a later time. So the next item up is our accommodations and recognitions. So we like to move straight into unsung heroes. It doesn't come until after citizen statements.
Hello, everyone. We have very special guests in the crowd today. We are among several rock stars from the Urbana School District, and we're happy to get started highlighting you so that you'll be able to go along and enjoy the rest of your evening and have dinner and celebrate with your loved ones. So thanks for coming out tonight. The unsung hero is an award that I believe was started by past Assistant Superintendent Gail Jeffries, and it really was to recognize staff members who consistently go above and beyond in their positions and who are typically pretty quiet and humble about what they do and just show up every day and do what we need. And so the unsung hero award is an opportunity for district staff to nominate their colleagues who deserve a moment to shine. And so these awards are not recommended necessarily by administrators. There might be a few administrator recommendations, but mainly they're recommended by your colleagues. And so if we could go to the next slide, we do have some folks that are here this evening. If I read your name, I think you skipped one, John. Sorry, because Marcy Bowman's first. All right, if I read your name, hi, Marcy. If you'll please stand up so that folks can see who you are, and if I mispronounce anything, I think I got it all, but if I mispronounced your name, I sincerely apologize. My maiden name was Agnaleddy, and it got messed up all the time, so I get it. All right, so Marcy Bowman, Urbana Middle School Teaching Assistant. Natalie Bretz. Yes, feel free to clap. Natalie Bretz, UMS Assistant Principal. Amani Carr, UMS Student Interventionist. Mitzi Castillo Maldonado, DPW Dual Language Family Liaison. Martha Cherukian, Yankee Ridge Fine Arts Teacher. Darian Kirill Sanchez, UMS Bilingual Teacher. Danielle Cook, Urbana School District Substitute Administrator. Bernice Dallas, Urbana Adult Education College and Career Coordinator. Tony Dizell, Urbana School District Facilities Service and Warehouse. Eric Franklin, Yankee Ridge Custodian. I'll do this. How about we save applause to the end so that your hands don't hurt? And if we have not already clapped for you, we will do a big clap at the end. So don't be, so I'm just going to try to save a little bit of time. Okay, so Sheri Givens, Yankee Ridge Speech and Language Pathologist. Terrence Gray, Urbana High School Students' Relations Supervisor. Brittany Harlan, First Student Bus Driver. Piper Harvey, Yankee Ridge Recreation Leader. Laura Hlinka, UMS Science Teacher. Cynthia Howie, UHS Teacher. Michelle Kim, UMS Student Engagement Advocate. Tyler Lang, UHS Athletic Assistant. Melissa Leidy, and if you are here, you stand. Yep, good. Melissa Leidy, UHS Instructional Coach. Cal Lutz, Urbana School District Grounds. Heather McDougall, Yankee Ridge Special Education Teaching Assistant. Andrea Maro King, Lille Dual Language Family Liaison. Aliyah Matthews, Wiley Elementary Teacher. Alexa Ray, Yankee Ridge Teaching Assistant. Janice Mitchell, UMS Parent Liaison. Stephanie Monagold, UMS Science Teacher. Londa Neely, Urbana Early Childhood School Teacher. Elizabeth Nieto, UMS Dual Language Teacher. Domisha Nun, Alternative Education Restorative Practices Freedom School Coordinator. You look so nice, Domisha. Uh huh. Oh, Janice, you didn't stand. You gotta stand. Oh, that's okay. All right, that's okay. That's okay. Michaela Osborne, King Special Education Paraprofessional. Heather Payne, Urbana Early Childhood School Social Worker. Ellen Recamp, UHS Special Education Teacher. Christine Rankenberger, UHS Assistant Principal. Kashla Rivera Toledo, UMS Dual Language Science Teacher. Wandalis Rodriguez Torres, UMS Dual Language SPED Teacher. Carla Schroeder, Wiley Instructional Coach. Leah Shaddix, Intensive Instructional K-2 Special Educator. Larry Simmons, Urbana Adult Education Counselor. Bonnie Teal, UMS Teacher. Michelle Turner, King Principal. Chris Vowles, Urbana School District Substitute Administrator. William Walsh, Urbana School District Network Technology Specialist. Anne Liquida Williams, Urbana Adult Education Receptionist. On behalf of, yes, yes, big claps, big claps. On behalf of the Urbana School District 116, Dr. Ivory Tatum and the HR team, thank you, Class of 2023 unsung heroes. And now we have a video that was compiled for us by UMS Teacher Parker Sands that we're going to go ahead and show, and this will also be sent out to the district. So we're super excited about the video, and thanks to Parker Sands for putting this together for us.
Hi, I'm Cindy Howie, and I'm a teacher at Urbana High School. Are you ready?
All right, unsung heroes, I will pass out your awards if you're here this evening, but feel free to go ahead and continue on. If you are here, would you please stand so we can give one more round of applause to everyone all together? Thank you so much for everything you do for Urbana students, Urbana families, Urbana staff. We appreciate you so much. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for choosing to work in Urbana.
Thank you all very much. We're going to pivot next to our student ambassador support. Want to thank these guys for being here for the past couple of years and really providing great input from the student body to this venue. It's their last time here tonight. So you guys have a report for us? Real quick? No? I know you're studying for finals, you're kind of occupied with that right now.
I'll just say thank you for this experience and this opportunity. It meant a lot, so thank you.
Board, it's been a long journey of you dealing with Michael Turner. Hope y'all know this isn't the last of me. You'll still have to deal with me, but thank y'all so much for taking the time to listen to me. I really appreciate it.
Yay. And we are not letting them get off that easily. So we have, on behalf of the board and administration, a token of our appreciation for their service. We acknowledged them at the mayoral recognition last week, but that wasn't enough. We needed to acknowledge you here as well. So if Parker could come on up, Parker Schroeder, and we have a certificate of service. Thank you, Parker. Wait, 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 wait. We also have a gift. It is a very nice portfolio because they're both going to be going to college very soon. So thank you, Parker, and Michael Turner, who is all dressed up coming from a band concert. He kept on his fancy duds. Thank you for your service, Michael, and congratulations on behalf of the board. We'll miss you guys. Before I take my seat, since I'm already standing here, John, you want to put up the next? So I did want to announce our new student ambassadors. We have a rising senior, Dominica Turner Winston, and a rising junior, Paulina Engrave, will be joining us next year. We went through a really long, extensive process to select these two UHS students. Several people from UHS are here in the audience who were part of that process, and they will be joining us in August. So congratulations to Dominica and Paulina.
Next up are citizen statements. So if the citizen statement is pertaining to the dual language discussion tonight, it's going to be also translated. So we're going to allow for double the time for those particular citizen statements. First up is Tina Gonzalez.
It's Alice, excuse me. Thank you. It's the role of the Board of Education to set policy and tone for the district, and I'm here to ask you to emphasize three related approaches to your responsibilities. One, to correct an imbalance that's affected recent actions by the district. Two, to respect your community by having hard conversations with us in public, transparently and inclusively, and most of all, three, to center student achievement in all your discussions and decisions. Vibrant public school districts rely on the involvement of overlapping constituencies, all working together to support a quality education. It takes dedicated professional teachers and support staff in our schools, involved families, and a larger community that knows about, cares about, and supports the district. Each group is important, and none can succeed without the others. Professional staff in our schools cannot succeed without family and community support. A community cannot thrive without vibrant and healthy schools. Parents will not send their children to our schools without trust in the skills and work of the teachers and staff. In Urbana, we seem somehow to have lost track of the interdependencies and importance of people beyond those paid by the district. Let me share with you some examples. The dual language report you were viewing tonight says that among focus groups, this is a quote, "Among focus groups' participants, there was broad support for unifying the elementary DL programs within a single building. Yet there were fourteen focus groups involving sixty-one district employees and two focus groups involving twelve parents, of whom only three represented parents of English-language learners. On the current Facilities Committee, of which I am a member, there are twenty-one community members and thirty-one district employees, and that's before you count the five ex officio district administrators who are also listed as members of the committee. When the district announced on February seventh and decided on February twenty-first, a bare two weeks later, that it was closing Wiley School for asbestos abatement, the processes excluded families and their voices were not heard. When the district was considering converting an elementary school to a dedicated dual-language school, we learned that the impetus came from teachers in the program and that drove the entire process. Families not participating in the DL program were purposefully excluded, though hundreds of their children would be affected by the changes. Surveys with exceedingly low, unreliably low, response rates from participating families were nonetheless represented as meaningful voice of families in the community. When a full third of the district committee didn't vote on the final recommendation because they, quote, "didn't have enough information," the district nonetheless moved the process forward. In none of these cases was supporting student achievement centered in the process or public discussion. In none of these cases were recommendations based on established best practices or recognized peer-reviewed relevant research. In none of these cases was the process transparent about how ideas arose or on what basis they were moving forward. I came to you first after decades of support from the sideline after my board service to talk about the critical importance of public trust and how quickly it can be lost. Since then, my concerns have not diminished. I'm asking you to make changes that start with requiring meaningful public knowledge and input into decisions. To do that, you must set out the problems and criteria, even when that may require difficult conversations, and share the criteria. Let me give you an example of my concern in this respect. The charge to the Facilities Committee is to provide a, quote, "comprehensive examination to best needs of the entire district, while examining future programming for Wiley in light of the comprehensive needs of all buildings and programs while also considering financial resources." We're asked to consider how many elementaries we should have, or whether we should have a dedicated special-purpose school, or now whether we should have a sixth-grade center. Yet there's no problem statement for us to discuss, to address. Is it overcrowding at the middle school? Is it paying for needed raises in the most recent teacher's contract? Is it declining enrollment? Is it the need of our children after the pandemic to be resocialized for how to behave or succeed in school? These issues have all been mentioned. I don't know which, if any, or all are the problem we're to work on. I'm not sure anyone does. Notice that the charge doesn't want mention student achievement. And remember that, again, the community voices are a minority of the committee. The absence of open and transparent conversations in the board and other district meeting is what erodes trust in the administration, the board, and the overall decision-making process. It appears that public input has come to be seen as something to be endured, not embraced, and one can only conclude that the district's existing mechanisms are failing or not being used appropriately. Losing the community's trust comes not from reasonable people disagreeing. It comes from an appearance that the district's processes are set up to evade challenging, honest, and public dialogues. You have the power and responsibility to change this. Please do. And thank you for listening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tina. Julie Duval?
My name is Julie Duval. I am a parent and grandparent of multiple students in Urbana. I'm also SPED advocate. Paul, I would like to ask again, if, I don't plan on it, but in case I go over five minutes, may I have an ADA accommodation? Please just make for eight minutes if necessary. Thank you. I'm going to wait till they quit talking so that they can hear, because it's really important. I came because of you guys. I am, I wanted to come to the new board because in February I came here to discuss the SPED issues. Brian, I can't pronounce his last name, said, mentioned that he would do a study session. I have yet to see that on the board. I am here to represent the SPED, or SPED, some of the SPED students here at Urbana. I'm really disappointed. I'm not sure if the board or the district is in the schools and seeing, today I was at the, at an elementary school. Nine kids between eight and nine were in the office, physically aggressive. My grandson has been hit twice this week, and the teacher told him that he is to ignore it. He is an autistic student. Good luck trying to get him to ignore something. That's the opposite of autism. I've worked with the admin. I've worked within the district. You have new admins coming in for the SPED department, central office admins. There's some things that I would like to bring to your attention. I'm asking this board, as you put a handbook together for the district, as you make a, what was it? The SPED, the policy manual, and doing the budgets, I would like to bring some things and update you of some things in the disability world. Dr. Ivory Tatum, you have a no-tolerance policy. I can tell you that my grandchildren and children have been hit forty-two times this school year. Those students that are hitting him are still in school. If you put it on paper, back it up. In March of this year, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of SPED parents and SPED students. Correct me, Todd, if I'm wrong, but the old way it used to be is if you had due process and you could sue under idea. Is that correct, Todd? Yep. And that was it. The Supreme Court ruled in March that, at this point, any student across America or parent can sue their district, not only under due process, not only under idea, but also under ADA violations, Americans' Disabilities Act. For those who are not aware, those are, my son's fidgets are damaged, destroyed, and taken every week. That is the equivalent of taking someone's wheelchair. Stopping advocates from coming into the building, being rude to parents or advocates. We have a federal paper, a contract, which is an IEP, and that IEP is a federal government protected by laws and civil rights. What concerns me is I'm, and I too am on the building committee, I need the community and the board to hear that when you're looking at numbers and budgets, the reason why I filed eight complaints against the district back in February is because in November, my family was violated. The school tried to help me, the district tried to help me, and nobody at the union would speak to me. It's a matter of common respect. That's, that can solve lots of problems, is talking, and they couldn't do that. And I didn't, it wasn't about winning, it was about, I wanted the respect for my child. In doing some numbers, there are four hundred and forty-seven, four thousand four hundred and forty-seven students in Urbana. Eight hundred and two of them are SPED. If a quarter of your students were to sue, you would have already maxed out your insurance premium for what they will pay. That will then come out of the school budget. So as we're talking about things that need to be done in the district, we do need social and emotional wraparound services for these children, students, that needs to start in preschool. They need to acknowledge, my son is going to middle school next year, and I have already informed the Urbana Police Department, the SRO, and Mr. Cooper, that if my son is treated the way that he was this year in elementary, I will file criminal charges. Those are hate crimes. And teachers are watching students get hit, and because there's no mark, they just let it go. And teachers are watching students get hit, and because there's no mark, they just let it go. Teachers are not telling their admins. Admins are not going to the district. You guys are, because people aren't listening, that's what's gonna cause them to sue. That's gonna feed, go through your budget very quickly. So as you guys make rules, follow them. Find a backup plan. Angie, you told me it was hard. The easy part was the federal government gave you the rules that, that you needed to follow for sped. Getting them followed is the hard part. That's what you're all here for. Figure it out. If there's a no tolerance policy, make, what is the paper trail? Make your people accountable. You're asking students, you're asking sped students to be accountable, and staff is, is not being held accountable. And people are going to start suing. I run a nonprofit agency. I was contacted by a local attorney who is willing to do ten pro bono cases for Champagne County. That's gonna start a, a big mess in Urbana. And that's not something, we, I keep coming here, Paul, I've come here three or four times. Please make a study session. Dr. Avery Tatum, I'm asking you, please make, hold accountable what you put on that paper. Lastly, I believe that the, the staff need training. It's not, the sped staff need support. The gen ed staff need education. Children are being penalized for things, my grandson got in trouble for humming, lost recess. I, I'm not sure what this board or the district's aware of. Kids are losing recess. Teachers are writing emails, and I've sent them to the, to the board. It is now April or May, and teachers are still taking away recess. That's illegal. You cannot do that. And then you walk into board meet, or into IEP meetings and psychologists are giving the wrong government information. And then it becomes a battle as I, as an advocate, I'm trying to give the correct information. So nobody's a bad teacher. They just need education. And you've got some good staff and you've got some good board members, and, and I hope this district or this new board, we can do better. And, and it's at the point I told you last time, our currency is gone. You know, you are now going to be held accountable to start paying. So as you're looking at the Wiley budget or you're looking at other expansions, please keep in mind that you need to put some money in reserve. Because if Urbana doesn't change, people are gonna sue and it's gonna start coming out of our pockets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Hickson. You're gonna need to, I'm sorry, you're gonna need to tap the button on the, on the microphone to, to turn. There you go. And then, thank you.
I want to talk about two things tonight. The Cal report about the DL program and the possibility of a sixth grade center. I think that these can both fit into the topic of social, emotional learning and the sociocultural context of teaching and learning. Here's how. In the early nineteen eighties, a UIUC researcher did an incredibly simple sort of study. He used three schools and King School was one, but of course, it was anonymized in the write-up. He recorded people reading-
Ms. Hickson, I'm sorry to stop you real quick, but because your topic is gonna cover dual language, we're gonna also have it be translated into Spanish for the people in the audience who might wanna to listen to what you have to say in Spanish. It will get doubly allotment of time, but we're gonna ask you to, to pause occasionally for the translation.
Okay. So do you want me to, do you want me not to say anything now?
Okay. That's not, that, that works fine. Please, yeah, yeah. My, my apologies.
That's okay. Can I borrow your paper afterwards?
Can you have the?
When you're done.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. When you're done, sure. When I'm done, sure.
Thank you for saying.
In the early, do I start over? No. In the early nineteen eighties, a UIUC research, researcher did an incredibly simple sort of study. He used three schools. King School was one, but of course, it was anonymized in the write-up. He recorded people reading short fables and fairy tales for children. He played the recordings for children in the three schools, and then he asked the children, "How smart is the person who was reading that story?" The readers were people from the US and from different countries, each having different accents because they came from different language backgrounds. He then compared the results. One school, School A, had no language minority children. Two schools served language minority students. And in both of those schools, students were taught English as a second language. One of those was King, where there was a great deal of emphasis placed on everybody learning a language and learning about each other's cultures. The other school, School B, did not emphasize language and cultural learning for everyone. Bowden's research question was, "How often would perceived intelligence be tied to the, to accent by the children in the different schools?" At King, it was clear. Students did not associate having an accent with perceived intelligence. At School A, with no language minority students, there was some link of accent to perceived intelligence. At School B, with, with an ESL program but no multicultural program, accent was invariably linked to perceived intelligence. So bringing the students together without doing the work of helping them understand each other and each other's cultures made things worse. Working at King, we all knew that we were all learning, all staff and all students. It was okay to fail and ask for help and try again. Administration worked with all the teachers to be sure that students were encouraged to use their home languages in the classrooms and in the hallways. Students put on plays for school assemblies in their home languages. And native language teachers were asked to always speak their home languages in the hallways, unless there was someone in the group who couldn't speak that language. They were our models of bilingualism. In the Cal report, it is obvious that that sociocultural context for teaching and learning is currently not in place for the dual-language staff, much less the students or the school. When I was subbing right before COVID, I saw an English dominant teacher within the DL program refuse to ask a Spanish dominant, dominant teacher in the program for help. The very thing that Bowden said is essential is missing. Cal did not recommend that the district go to a one-building model because Cal is research-based and knows there is not research to support that. They did make other very strong recommendations and said that maybe it would be easier to implement those recommendations in a single building. But there's no guarantee. There was not a hard push to do better in two buildings, which we know and research shows can be done. How do you know things will be better in one? And for the sixth graders, I could not find any research that supported a sixth-grade center. However, there is a lot of research that shows that sixth graders do better if you leave them in the elementary buildings. One article said, "The most compelling reason to keep sixth graders in elementary school is that they do better." A Duke University study found that elementary sixth graders had fewer behavior issues than their middle school counterparts and that the negative behaviors of the middle schoolers continued well beyond sixth grade. The same group also found that test scores of sixth graders in elementary schools were higher than those of sixth graders in so, in middle schools. One year in a sixth-grade center will not help the social, emotional learning of our sixth graders. Leave them where they already have longstanding relationships with teachers who have watched them grow up and know their mother. Right now, with our achievement scores where they are, less than twelve percent of the fifth graders going into a sixth-grade center will read and do math on grade level. There's a lot of research that shows that behavior issues go up as achievement goes down. Bring up the, the achievement, give them another year to grow up and learn to read better.
I'm gonna try my best. There's not always like a complete translation or direct translation from this. El contexto sociocultural y emocional del aprendizaje y la enseñanza. Quiero hablar de dos cosas. El reporte de Cal del programa dual y la posibilidad de un centro de sexto grado. Creo que ambos de estos pueden caer en la, en el tópico de emocional social, aprendizaje emocional social y sociocultural en el contexto de aprendizaje y aprendizaje, eh, y enseñanza. A principios de mil novecientos ochenta, un investigador de la Universidad de Illinois hizo un pequeño estudio pero increíble. Él usó tres escuelas. La escuela King era una, pero claro, se mantuvo anonimato en la, en el estudio. Él grabó a diferentes personas leyendo historias cortas para niños. Cuando él tocó de vuelta este, esta grabación a los niños en las tres escuelas, le preguntó, ¿cuán inteligente es la persona que estaba leyendo esta historia? Los que estaban leyendo eran personas de Estados Unidos de diferentes estados o provincias. Cada cual tenía diferentes acentos porque venían de diferentes lenguajes. Él luego comparó los resultados. Una estudia, una, una escuela, escuela A, no tenía ninguna minoría, estudiantes de minoría de lenguaje. Dos escuelas servían este, con estudiantes de minoría de lenguaje. En ambos, los estudiantes fueron enseñados en inglés como segundo lenguaje. En una de ellas fue King. Y había un gran énfasis en todo el mundo aprender el lenguaje y sobre las otras culturas. En la otra escuela, escuela B, no se enfatizaba en el lenguaje y el aprendizaje de las otras culturas. La pregunta de investigación de Buton era, cómo o cuán, cuán seguido se percibía la inteligencia atada al acento en las, en los niños de las diferentes escuelas. Cómo los niños percibían si alguien era inteligente basado en el acento. En la escuela King era claro, los estudiantes no asociaban los acentos en los diferentes acentos con la inteligencia del individuo. En la escuela A, donde no había estudiantes de minoría, había una relación entre acento y la percepción de que eran más inteligentes. En la escuela B, que tenía un programa de inglés como segundo lenguaje, pero no un programa multicultural, el acento estaba atado a la inteligencia percibida por los estudiantes. Ahora bien, cuando se trae a los estudiantes juntos, sin enseñarles a cada uno la diferencia entre culturas, hace las cosas peores. Trabajando en King, todos sabemos que, que estamos aprendiendo todos juntos, los estudiantes y los trabajadores o maestros. Estaba bien hacer errores y preguntar por más ayuda y seguir tratando. La administración trabajó con todas las maestras para asegurarse que los estudiantes pudieras, pudiesen usar su lenguaje de casa, su lenguaje nativo, en los salones y en los pasillos. Los estudiantes programaban diferentes obras de, para la escuela y para las asambleas en su propio lenguaje. Y las maestras de lenguaje nativo siempre, se les preguntaba para hablar en sus idiomas en las, en los diferentes pasillos y lugares de la escuela, a menos que alguien en el grupo no pudiese hablar ese lenguaje. Ellos eran los modelos de biling, los modelos bilingües. En el reporte de Cal, es obvio que el contexto sociocultural para aprender y, y para enseñar no está en su lugar para el, para los trabajadores de dual, mucho menos para los estudiantes de la escuela. Cuando yo estaba sustituyendo antes de COVID, vi un maestro que era de inglés dominante en el programa dual que se, se rehusó a pedir ayuda a una maestra que hablaba español como su primer idioma. Eso es exactamente lo contrario que Buton dice, que es esencial y es lo que falta. Cal nos recomendó al distrito que nos fuéramos a un modelo de un solo edificio porque la investigación dice que no hay suficiente información para apoyar eso. Ellos sí hicieron otras recomendaciones muy fuertes en las cuales podrían ser mucho más fáciles de implementar en solamente un edificio, pero no significa que es imposible aplicarlos en más de un edificio. No hay garantía que un edificio lo haga más eficaz. Si no hubiese un empuje más fuerte para hacer lo mejor en dos edificios, ¿cómo saben que va a ser mejor en uno? Podemos hacer-
Do you want me to read the little note? Okay, okay.
Para sexto grado.
Okay. Not sixth grade? All right.
Thank you very much. Next up is Brianna Lawrence. Again, this is about dual language. Ms. Brianna Lawrence?
As we were transitioning, we had another unsung hero in, come in the room. Can you just stand up quickly? Kashla Rivera Toledo, UMS dual-language teacher extraordinaire. So sorry, I'm sure that it was very difficult to find parking, and so, sorry that you missed the presentation, but we'll be sending it out too. But thank you for coming. Is this still on? Okay. Yes. Is that better? So I'm gonna try, I have, I have a lot here. I'm gonna try to simp-
Brianna, can you put the mic right at your mouth? Maybe switch your paper and mine?
Yeah, it's gotta be within just a few inches. There, there, that's best.
So I have a lot here and I, I'm gonna email you guys because I've footnoted all of, all of this. And I have figures. Do you wanna? Okay. I was a member of the dual-language committee for eleven months and asked repeatedly about data on student performance, which we never saw. We're seeing that tonight in the Cal report.
Fui parte del comité de lenguaje dual y serví por casi un año y siempre estuve pidiendo por data y nunca fue enseñada hasta el día de hoy.
So as somebody who likes data and wasn't getting it internally, I decided to look externally.
Como alguien que le encanta los datos y no la encontré interna, internamente, fui a buscarla externamente.
I'm maintaining a dataset on all of the dual-language programs in the state. Their language allocation, what percent of each language they use for each grade, and the number of other, a number of other variables that came up in our discussion last year.
Ella ha estado guardando datos acerca de todos los programas de lenguaje dual en el estado y manteniendo los programas que tiene, las allocaciones de lenguaje y otras variables que son importantes para este programa.
For this discussion, I created a second dataset of all Illinois elementary schools that served twenty percent or more English language learner students and looked at IAR English Language Arts pass, uh, passage rates.
Ella creó un segundo set de data de todas las escuelas elementares de Illinois que sirven aproximadamente veinte por ciento o más de estudiantes de aprendizaje de inglés.
Okay. The first figure that you have, figure one, is the number of dual-language programs in Illinois by language allocation, starting in kinders. So I think everybody here knows that when we talk about a ninety-ten model or an eighty-twenty model, we're talking about what the language allocation is starting in kindergarten.
La figura número uno muestra todos los programas de Illinois que tienen programa dual desde Kinder y las allocaciones de lenguaje, ya sea ochenta, veinte, cincuenta, cincuenta, y noventa, diez.
The most common program in the state is an eighty-twenty model. Eighty-twenty-one- Eighty-twenty-one-way models are not, don't have English speakers in them, that's what that means there.
La mayoría de ellos son ochenta-veinte.
So this is the most common one. And then this one doesn't have English language.
La más común es ochenta-veinte y sí incluye habladores nativos en inglés y el otro es ochenta-veinte donde solamente incluye hispanohablantes.
The least common model in the state is a ninety-ten model, which is the one that we have here.
El menos común en todo el estado es de noventa-diec, que es el que tenemos aquí.
The second figure shows the mean percent of ELL students meeting or exceeding ELA IAR standards. So TBE, TPI, and ESL programs would be transitional programs of instruction for students.
En la próxima figura tenemos el porcentaje medio de estudiantes con inglés como segundo idioma alcanzando o excediendo los estándares de IAR en lenguaje de artes en inglés. La primera barra es de programas que son de ESL, TPL y TBE, comparado con la segunda que es el DL, dual language.
So, in Figure Two, you can see that those programs outperformed DL programs by a little bit.
En esa figura puedes ver como esos otros programas alcanzan más alto que el lenguaje dual.
Figure Three shows DL programs disaggregated.
La figura tres enseña este lenguaje dual desagregado.
When we disaggregate the programs, we see that fifty-fifty programs perform better than TBE, TPI, and ESL programs, just on that ELA standard.
Si fuéramos a separar lo del programa dual en diferentes aloccaciones del lenguaje, podemos ver que la locación de cincuenta-cincuenta es aún mejor que los programas de ESL, TPL y TBE.
Ninety-ten programs, like the one we have here, were, there were a small number of them. They had the worst performance on ELA standards of any of the types of programs.
El programa que tenemos aquí, nueve-diec, es parte de esa barra, que significa que es de menos alcanz, o menos por ciento de crecimiento en inglés.
Right now, our students are expected to learn to read in English by leveraging what they know already in Spanish and picking it up organically along the way. And then they start ELA instruction in the third grade or fourth grade and jump in at grade, they're supposed to jump in at grade level material in English.
Ahora mismo los estudiantes están expuestos a un noventa-diec, que eso hace que tengan que aprender inglés por estar, verdad, aprendiendo el español y alcanzándolo orgánicamente por el camino. Luego, cuando llegan a tercer grado, están siendo, tienen la expectativa de que puedan estar haciendo inglés al nivel de tercer grado.
That places really high expectations on our students to make more than one grade level progress per year that they're in the program.
Eso pone mucha presión en nuestros estudiantes para que puedan alcanzar crecimiento en un año.
These expectations come out of a study from Thomas and Collier. Several studies, actually, those studies, I believe, are fairly weak. The only data that they identify, the school district that it comes from, comes out of the Houston School District during the period when they were using high-stakes testing. And it was the model that eventually led to No Child Left Behind. And then when the Houston School District was examined later, widespread fraud was found within that school district.
Esta filosofía que estaban aplicando vino de un estudio de las escuelas de Houston que estaba haciendo durante el periodo, verdad, donde estaba el No Child Left Behind y se encontró que es un periodo donde había este, un significativo número de trampa haciendo para pasar los exámenes por esta presión de No Child Left Behind.
More recent literature shows that on average, dual language programs offer English language learners the education in English that in the long run is roughly equivalent to transitional programs.
Literatura más reciente enseña que en promedio los programas dual ofrecen lenguaje, ofrecen sus estudiantes una educación en inglés que es más o menos similar o equivalente a los programas de transición.
I'm saying this because I know that there's a commitment to a ninety-ten model, but I think that it's worth examining whether we want to keep that or whether we want to begin teaching children to read in English starting in kindergarten.
Lo digo porque sé que tenemos, verdad, este, esta filosofía de noventa-diec, pero les quiero, verdad, preguntar si estamos quedándonos en noventa-diec o si podemos reexaminar la filosofía que estamos usando y enseñar inglés antes del grado, de tercer grado.
One of the recommendations in the CAL report is that we move to an eighty-ten model.
Una de las recomendaciones de CAL fue que nos moviéramos a un modelo que es ochenta-veinte.
That does not appear in the district's interpretation of the CAL report.
Eso no aparece en la interpretación del distrito como las recomendaciones de CAL.
That's all.
Eso es todo.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ruth Kontorvitz, it's again about dual language.
Okay, can you? Dear members of the board, the report of the external evaluation of the DL program is in.
Queridos miembros de... La evaluación externa del programa dual ya está.
The report exposes the failure and the mismanagement of the program.
El reporte expresa el manejo inadecuado y... El manejo inadecuado del programa.
We learned that the program has been operating without curriculum and proper instructional materials.
Aprendimos que el programa está siendo operado sin ningún currículo y ninguno de los materiales de instrucción apropiados.
As a result, teachers are creating their own curriculum materials, which the report on page forty-two describes as a hatch pack of materials.
Como resultado, los maestros están creando su propio currículo y sus propios materiales, lo cual el reporte describe como una mezcla de materiales.
For years, the Dual Language Administration has been telling the district that the dual language program is a success.
Por años, la administración del programa dual le ha dicho al distrito que el programa dual es un éxito.
To quote, "Students in the DL program are achieving well academically in both languages." Dual language students, on average, are on par or outperforming district averages of students in the English-only classrooms. The administration insists that in the DL program there are no substantial achievement gaps across racial, ethnics, and linguistics groups of students.
Okey, algunas de las diferentes referencias son estudiantes en el programa dual están logrando este, exitosamente en ambos lenguajes académicamente. También los estudiantes del programa dual tienen un buen porcentaje en la cual están superando los porcentajes del distrito de otros estudiantes que están en salones con inglés nada más. Y la administración insiste que el programa dual no hay un... Una diferencia o un, verdad, un abismo causado por raza, ethnicity o por lengua entre los grupos de estudiantes.
The report says otherwise. English learners in the elementary dual language program are not learning English. When they enter middle school, they are still not proficient in English.
Estos estudiantes de programa dual no están aprendiendo inglés. Cuando ellos entran a la escuela intermedia, ellos aún no son proficientes en inglés.
There are great disparities in academic performance between the English-speaking students and the Spanish-speaking students. While the native English speakers excel and outperform their peers in the monolingual classrooms, the Spanish-speaking students are left far behind, with barely five percent of them in K through five being proficient at grade level in math and English.
De hecho, hay grandes diferencias entre el alcance académico entre los hispanohablantes y los que hablan inglés, mientras que los que hablan inglés como primer idioma están superando y alcanzando más... Sí, alcanzando más que los diferentes compañeros del monolingüe. Los estudiantes que hablan español están quedándose atrás, con solamente cinco por ciento alcanzando proeficiencia en el grado, en matemática y en inglés.
Even in Spanish, the English-speaking students outperform the Spanish speakers.
Inclusive en español, los que son nativos, que hablan inglés como primer idioma están superando a aquellos que hablan español como primer idioma.
It is essential to understand that a dual language program has a different goal than a program for English learners. For a DL program, it is just as important to teach Spanish to the English speakers as it is to teach English to the Spanish speakers. In fact, our Spanish dual language program puts more weight in teaching Spanish than teaching English.
Es importante entender que el programa dual tiene un gol, una meta diferente a la que un programa de inglés como segundo idioma tiene. Para un lenguaje dual, es tan importante enseñar español a los que hablan inglés como es enseñarle inglés a los que hablan español. Sin embargo, como he hecho, los estudiantes que hablan español en el programa dual... Nuestro programa dual en español pone más peso en enseñar español que enseñar inglés.
In the ninety-ten model of our dual language program, Spanish is being taught first while formal English instructions wait till second, third grade. This puts the immigrant kids at a disadvantage.
En nuestro programa noventa-diec, para el programa dual, español es lo primero que se enseña, mientras que inglés se espera hasta segundo o tercer grado para enseñarse. Esto pone en desventaja a nuestros estudiantes inmigrantes.
In 2016, in an interview for a local newspaper, the director of the bilingual program at the time, Joe Wimlet, said, "The younger you start with a language, the easier and better you learn it." As part of a dual language student, sorry, as a parent of a dual language student, Joe continues, "It's amazing to see the things my son does in two languages, something I wasn't able to do."
En el 2016, en una entrevista con el director del programa dual, en aquel tiempo, Joe Wimlet dijo: "Mientras más temprano o más joven empieces con el lenguaje, lo más fácil y mejor vas a aprenderlo." Como padre de un estudiante de lenguaje dual, él continuó: "Es impresionante ver como las cosas que mi hijo logra hacer en ambos lenguajes, algo que yo no pude hacer."
So the dual language program may be a great enrichment program for Joe's kids, but by not teaching English to the immigrant children, our district violates their civil rights.
Se puede que el programa dual sea excelente para los, un excelente programa para los niños de Joe, pero no para enseñarle inglés a los niños de inmigrantes.
To make things worse, at the elementary school level, English learners in the DL program do not receive additional ESL services. That's on page thirty-four in the report. Those additional ESL services are required by the Illinois law.
Adicional a eso, y lo que hace esto peor es que en la elemental los estudiantes de, los estudiantes que están aprendiendo inglés en el programa dual no reciben servicios adicionales para inglés como segundo lenguaje. Eso está en la página treinta y cuatro del reporte y esos servicios adicionales son requeridos por ley.
The administration may try to highlight a recommendation in the report to consider the advantages of a whole-school model. If you read the full report though, you'll see on page thirty-two that this recommendation is based on the focus groups.
La administración tratará de recomendar o resaltar las recomendaciones en el reporte para considerar las ventajas de un programa o modelo de escuela completa, escuela entera. Pero si lee ese reporte en página cuarent, en página treinta y dos, esta recomendación es basada solamente en los grupos de enfoque.
It says, "Among focus groups participants, there was broad support for unifying the elementary dual language programs within a single building." However, the makeup of the focus groups did not represent the community. There were fourteen focus groups for district employees. Six of them were for administrators. For parents, there were only two focus groups. Only five of the parents were Spanish speakers.
En este grupo focal, los participantes que estaban en apoyo para unificar las escuelas de dual en elemental estaban hechos o representados por diferentes aspectos de la comunidad, pero no era adecuado. No era adecuado porque habían catorce grupos focales que tenían empleados del distrito, seis de ellos eran para administradores, mientras que para los padres habían solamente dos grupos de enfoque y cinco de ellos, o cinco de los padres, eran hispanohablantes.
A whole-school model cannot fix the fundamental problems in the DL program, nor the injustice the DL program does to the English learners in it.
Un modelo de escuela entera de dual no puede arreglar el problema fundamental del programa dual, ni la injusticia que el programa dual le causa a los estudiantes de aprendizaje de inglés.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're about halfway through our public participation. If anybody else wishes to give a statement before the board, please fill out a form and hand it to Lori Johnson. But if it's all right with the people waiting, we have a group of high school students here who have finals this week who are willing to give a presentation before the board. It shouldn't take terribly long with your, unless there's an objection, we'd like to see them kind of step in front here temporarily. Then we'll continue with citizen statements afterwards. Is that all right? Okay. So we'll quickly just do our UHS Habitat presentation.
Hi. Hey, everybody. So first of all, I'm Mark Foley. I'm a high school teacher at Urbana High School. And we are here as the sponsors of Habitat for Humanity. This is Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura.
What do you do?
I teach English and psychology at Urbana High School and I co-sponsor Habitat Club with Mark.
We appreciate you letting us get in this. Like I said, these kids do have to, or like Paul said, they have to get back and study for finals, right, guys?
They were having a really good time.
They were, it was fun. So we're gonna go through a brief explanation of a trip. There are two trips that we took this year, just kind of to make you aware of what we do and also to just make the new board members aware, because I think, you know, it's been a while since we've been over here. We've been doing this trip for a long time now. So Laura's gonna start by talking a little bit about what our trip is.
All right, so we started UHS Habitat Club in 2013. I started at Urbana High School in 2012 and that's when Mark and I kind of figured out that we had both worked with Habitat before. We had both taken trips to the Mississippi Delta and that was very much part of who we were and what we did and even what had kind of brought us to this place as educators. And some more events transpired. There were lots of conversations with students who were wanting to get involved with the community and they really got behind the idea and presented to administrators. And we got Habitat Club off the ground in spring of 2013 and then our first trip to Mississippi was in the spring of 2014. And then our first trip to Mississippi was in the spring of 2014. And those are our first students that we took down there, Mark and I looking considerably younger. So since then, we've traveled to Tutweiler, Mississippi with groups of students ten more times. We had a little bit of a hiatus due to COVID, which was actually kind of nice because we got to do an extended build here in Urbana. You know, it was neat to make those connections. But each of those trips have been very meaningful, very impactful for the students who have attended. We hear back from alumni all the time about how that's really shaped their experience after high school and about how much they look back on that trip with gratitude and the experiences that they have and how much they learned from, from that experience. And I think it's also really shaped both of us as educators and been meaningful. There have been many times where it's what's kept me in the profession is being able to do these trips with students. And they're very amazing kids. You'll hear from them in a minute. We're really proud of these guys and all the, all the students who came before them and the work that they've done to make this continue.
Okay, so this, in this school year, we went to Mississippi in November 2022. In February 2023, we took approximately forty Urbana high school students. We mainly just take juniors and seniors, mostly seniors. The trips are funded through fundraisers. We have an endowment from a couple of parents of an alum who set up an endowment for us a few years ago. We also have several regional and national grants that we use, and students do pay a fee. I will just say, this is not, it's not a criticism at all, but everything that we do, we do without using any money from the district, right? So we're pretty proud of that, although if necessary, we may come back over and ask for money at a later date. So we reserve the right to do that. Thank you for laughing. Okay, next slide. Okay, there you go. So why Tutweiler, Mississippi? I will make this brief. We work with Champaign County Habitat for Humanity a lot. In fact, this week on Thursday, we're going up to Rantoul to do another build with them. So we do a lot of work in our local community, and we really enjoy that. And I think we've been doing that the entire time, and it's one of the best parts of our community. But, that's me saying, okay, there you go. Mississippi is a place that is particularly impacted by inequality in our nation. It is the state with the highest percentage of people living in poverty, surpassed only by Puerto Rico, which is a territory. And it also, inside of Mississippi itself, and this would be the next slide, is Tutweiler, Mississippi, which is in West Tallahatchie County, which is in essentially one of the poorest areas of the country that you could possibly imagine. And it is a place that has been ravaged by white supremacy for years and years. This is Mississippi. And obviously, poverty is also very widespread there. So we have been dedicated to going to that place in America and trying to make change in that space. And with the theory generally that whatever we can do there will be something that will be very helpful across the entire country. But what we've learned, of course, is the more that we've put into this mission, the more we have gotten out of it. And I think you'll hear that from the kids tonight. So I think there's one more. So what do we do on these trips? I'm going to have the students come up and talk to you about this. The first two will be Arwin and Hadasha, and then Anna, Eve, and Isaac, and then Kristin and Qualle. Anna and Isaac will then come back to talk about working in schools. And then everyone will just talk for just a minute or two about the bonding that they have. So we'll start with Arwin and Hadasha.
Hi, my name's Arwin. I'm a senior at Urbana. And me and Hadasha are going to talk about the construction, which is the main reason that we really go to Mississippi. So I got to go on two trips, so it was really special for me to kind of watch kind of the frame of the house really become like a home. Obviously, everyone gets to see a lot of progress be made on the house. But going in November and February is very special, just to watch, like, just like when you started, it was like lots of exposed insulation. The framing was all exposed. And then, so when we ended in February, it really started to come together and look like a home. All the walls were up and painted, and it looked very put together and nice. And, yeah, I don't know, it was just unique and very special to watch, like, the beginnings of a house, like, actually become a home and talk to the homeowner and watch her work with us and, like, watch her house come together.
Hello, I'm Hadasha. I'm a junior, and I went on the November trip. My experience working on the house was quite similar to Arwin's. I, I participated in making, in doing drywall. And a lot of people say that experiencing new things expands your horizons. And I would agree with this, because never in my life would I have thought, hey, now I know how to build a house, and now I can. And it's not only that building this house was a learning experience, but just as Arwin said, towards the end of the, like, when we were at the end of our trip, the owner who would be end up buying this house would come over, and she was able to see what we had done. And that really impacted me personally, seeing how, hey, this is what we're doing. At first, yes, we're coming here to build a house, but it doesn't really impact you as much since you're constantly doing work and you're participating as a community. But really seeing how this is impacting someone's life, you're able to understand how this is such an important thing that many people should try and do.
We also wanted to acknowledge kind of our mentors, which was JD Smith, who is our supervisor, and Lorenzo, who worked alongside us. They were amazing to work with. JD is so wise and incredible, and so was Lorenzo. And it just, like, it helped not only having like Mark and Laura, who obviously know far more than we do about building a house, but having JD and Lorenzo, who are very knowledgeable and, I think, helped us better connect to the community and, you know, like, a real, I don't know, it just helped to have people that we were closer to on the build that connected us community.
Especially someone we can rely on.
Do we just want to go down the line?
Yes. Hello, my name is Anna. I'm a junior, and I went on the, I went on the February trip with Habitat. So one of the most important things we learned on this trip was not just about building a house, but also about the history of the South and about the history of America. We did this by experiencing, like, the South, it was my first time being in the Deep South, and it was a really big shock to me to see how much racism and structural racism really affected the daily lives of everybody there. But we also went to a lot of museums. One museum was the National Civil Rights Museum in Memphis, Tennessee. It was, it's a museum that was extended off of the hotel room in which MLK was shot. The room itself has been preserved to be almost exactly how it was when he was shot. And I didn't actually get to see it because there was a really long line. But it was incredible to think of how such an important piece of history was made so close to where I was standing. Across the street, there was another museum that was, that took, that was in the building that the person who assassinated him fired from. And in that building, there was a bunch of hypotheses about why he was shot and the role many different people had to play in it.
Hi, my name is Isaac. I'm also a junior. And one of the things we, we did while we were, like, learning about the history of the area, we went to the monument of the Elaine massacre. And there's a lot of history we could get into, but like Mark was saying, white supremacy has been kind of just an issue in this area of the South since there, like, was a country there. And basically, what the Elaine massacre was, there was a sharecropper's union who, they gathered to basically advocate for better pay from the people, from the farmers they were working for. And then white supremacists and the Arkansas governor had, like, the National Guard come in, and they... The number of, like, sharecroppers who was, who were killed is still, like, unknown. Estimates, I think, go from, like, four to, like, seven hundred, but they really, like, there's no way for them to know. And there wasn't a monument until, like, not, like, a few years ago, there wasn't a monument, and they didn't really acknowledge it in just the history of Arkansas. So it's, it's a really powerful thing to think about, just they don't have, like, the names of people who were affected by this.
Hi, I'm Eve Foley. I am also a junior, and I went on the November trip. So I also went to the Civil Rights Museum, but I did not go to the Elaine massacre. And I think an important thing that I'm going to preface what I'm going to explain about Emmett Till is that being in all these sites was extremely impactful, not only for me, but I think for everyone involved. And you'll hear this later on when we're talking about our bonding, but I think that's why we bonded so much is because of how impactful it is to be in a place where something so horrific has happened, which is kind of demented to think about, but when you're actually there, it's like an overwhelming feeling. So we also went to the money store. So this is in the context of Emmett Till's murder. We went to the money store, which is extremely rundown now. And being there, like, I'm in, I'm in a history class right now, and we learned about Emmett Till. And before going, we were all required to learn about Emmett Till before going down to Mississippi. And so while, like, we all learned about him, and that was really, it was, like, really depressing to learn about such a horrific thing that happened, but actually going down there and being in the place where it happened, I think was so overwhelming and impactful on not only me, but just everyone that I've talked to and everyone who's gone down there. And I'm really so grateful that we were able to go to not only the money store, but we were also able to go to the courthouse where Emmett Till's murderers were acquitted. And then we also went to the riverside where his body was found. And this evening was probably one of the most emotional for me, because going there and being in such a, not horrific place, but just like a place where all these terrible things have happened, was so impactful on me. And it was, I'm just so grateful that I had the opportunity to go down there and, like, truly get this depth of learning. I feel like all of this really helped me to learn at a deeper level. And it was just, I don't know, we, we went to the Civil Rights Museum, they went to the Elaine massacre monument, and we all went to the Emmett Till. We all had our Emmett Till night. And it was, I don't know, I just, I think we can all agree that it was one of the most emotional parts of the trip, and it was probably the most impactful on me. And, I don't know, I think it kind of changed the course of my life, realizing how real history is. But, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristin Howell, and I'm a senior at Urbana. So while in Mississippi, apart from building the house and visiting the historic sites, we also had the opportunity to spend time with the community. So after the builds, oftentimes, we had time to go play outside, and there would be, like, a ton of kids, and they would, like, be so excited to play. And there was basketball courts and, yeah.
Hi, I'm Qualle. I'm a junior at Urbana, and I went on the November trip. The community down in the Delta was like a really unique place, you know? Despite the fact that many people down in the Delta are facing, like, a lot of challenges of poverty and financial situations, they're really bright people, and they're really open to us, especially those people living in the Habitat-built houses. After a long day of work, working on the houses, we spent a lot of time with the kids outside. And it was, it felt, for me, it was very emotional, because I got a sense that I was doing something that was, like, bettering the lives of a lot of kids down there in the community. So, yeah.
So there was a city nearby, Tutweiler, called Clarksdale, and we went there often. And every time we drove past, there was a billboard that said, "And corporal punishment in Mississippi schools." And that was really shocking to me, because I remember when we first drove down, I asked, I think Laura, I was, like, is corporal punishment legal in Mississippi schools? And she said, "Yeah." And I said, "Is that when, like, teachers hit kids?" And she said, "Yeah." And I said, "That's legal?" Because that's just crazy to me. In November, or sorry, in February, my trip, we had a chance to volunteer for a full day at the schools, Booker T. Washington Elementary School. I was in a room that was, I think, mostly third graders. It was a special education room. And I was just really shocked about the way that the teacher taught the kids. Like, they weren't approached with empathy or kindness. They were seen kind of as a problem to solve or just a thing to push aside until three o'clock when they could be sent home. And I think it helped for me to see the larger picture of everything that was happening in the Delta and kind of the larger cycle of poverty that kids were being thrown into. It was just really shocking to see, like, this giant cultural difference in how kids, and especially kids who are at such a disadvantage, were treated.
Yeah, like Anna was talking about, it was a very, like, it was a huge shift just culturally, going from schools that, like, like Urbana High School to this school. When we walked in, the day we were, like, volunteering in the office, they had, like, on the wall, a poster with, like, goals for the year's standardized testing. And it just had percentages of, like, proficiency in math, proficiency in reading. And the percentages were really low. I think the math score was seventeen percent proficiency for, like, the age range, which was really shocking to me, just because, like, it's very different than the schools I, I've experienced and the schools I've been in. Just for seventeen percent of the kids to be able to be on track with their age range was really shocking to me. And like Anna was talking about, corporal punishment was, it's weird to see teachers just, like, so openly, like, smack a kid when they're being rowdy. And I was in a, I was in a pre-K room, so I was in a room with a bunch of four-year-olds. And we went in there on Friday, so our four-year-olds got fun Friday that day. So we were just, like, watching Lion King, and we went to the art room, and they, like, finger painted and stuff. And I wouldn't expect a group of four-year-olds to be, like, stern and on track when they're watching Lion King. But this teacher was not patient with these children, like, in any capacity. She was yelling at these kids, putting them in timeout for the entire day that we were there. And it was really shocking to see just that, like, lack of empathy like Anna was talking about.
Hi, I'm Eli. I'm a senior. I got to go on the April build last year and the February trip this year. One of the most valuable things about this trip that hasn't been mentioned yet is the bonding that we got to experience. Every night in the dorm, we would sit around on all the couches, on the floors, in a circle, and share with the whole group our highs and lows of that day, which ranged from really deep things that we learned and experiences that we had, but also, you know, silly goofy moments with kazoo's. We would sing a couple songs. And on the drive down, we were assigned to four different vans. And I know a lot of us experienced a lot of connection with the people that we got to drive around with, both on the way down and up and all, to all the different cities that we visited. It was, on both trips, some of the most human connection I've ever experienced and incredibly meaningful to me.
Hi, I'm Qualle again. Another important part of the bonding that happened down in Tutweiler was all of the chores and things that we did inside of the dorms. You know, students living, living with each other sounds, like, pretty awkward. But, yeah, that, that made a lot of bonds between the students, just having to cook with each other, share food with each other, and, like, prepare all kinds of things together. So, yeah, bonding was great. So, yeah, bonding was great.
Okay, thanks. The other thing they did mention is none of the kids bring their cellphones, which, just real quick, raise your hand if you wish you'd brought your cellphone. Right? They actually really, really like not having their cellphones. So, thank you for giving us time, and we appreciate you very much. Uh, we have presents for you. Uh, these are letters, um, that the students have written about their experience. And there's a lot of students who couldn't be here tonight for a variety of reasons, so they wanted to express to you what the trip means. Um, I would just say, as somebody who's been in this district for a long time, there may come times in your experience as a board member where you feel downcast and sad about the status of things. Read the notes. If you read the letters, they'll probably make you feel better. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you very much. And, and thanks to public speakers for, for this allowance. Uh, next up in our citizen statements is Julia Hochmeyer.
Like this? Can you hear me? Hi. Um, so, so first of all, thank you to all of the members of the board for your service. Um, you guys really don't have an easy job. Um, so, so like many Urbana residents and parents in the district, I've been following the discussion around Wiley and the new facilities committee with great interest. I had asked the board where to find the recording and materials of the committee meetings that had been promised, and, and I still hope you will make them widely accessible. Um, I had hoped that the, the information provided to this community, to, sorry, to this committee would help us understand what exactly the options are that are being considered. And I was very surprised and disappointed that the district hadn't given the necessary information to that committee. Minimally, I think this committee, the board, and the general public should have a clear understanding of, A, what approximately can be done with the twenty or so million dollars that are being discussed? Because many of us really don't have any idea of, like, that, like, how far the sum would go. Um, and B, um, a clear understanding of the different options that are on the table. So to me, that would include things like, um, a crisp description of the option, what specific problems the, the option is supposed to address, any evidence that this option would achieve its intended goal, um, how exactly which buildings would be affected and would possibly have to be modified, and at what cost, um, which and how many families, students, and staff would be displaced or otherwise affected, and how this would affect walkability, especially for our youngest students, um, and also busing across the district. How this option would affect academic achievement, after-school extracurriculars like music and athletics and so on, um, special education, um, kids with IEPs, et cetera. Um, and most importantly, um, why it would be worth closing a beloved neighborhood school for that option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is, uh, Wendelis Rodriguez Torres, uh, about dual language. If, if you'd like it to be translated, just to, okay, thank you.
I can.
Just, just asking.
Good evening. Um, I am Dr. Rodriguez, a special ed teacher from UMS. Um, I am not here to talk about research or theories. Um, you know, uh, the benefits of the bilingual education. Um, yes, I have the opportunity to see the results, um, and say that our children are not showing academic progress. You know, I am not surprised. You know, what the report does not say is that daily we have to offer support in different areas. We are teachers, counselors, friends, and even parents. Because many of our children are alone, without their parents, and without their siblings. They only have us. The school has not been able to get support staff who can communicate with them. So they are dealing with their emotional health, a new language, and academic content. Many of them leave the school to go to work and pay off debt that will supposedly guarantee happiness. Currently, I am part of the Spanish Language Arts Committee, and I know that the district has direct its resource to offer us all of the support they can. But we need be a single program from pre-K to twelve, have a single vision, and a sequential curriculum that offer continuity. I am confident that the effort we make will help us offer a bilingual education to our community, that among many things will make our children competent for the globalized world. We have the energy and the motivation to do our job, and I know we can do it together. Buenas noches. Soy la doctora Rodriguez, maestra de educación especial de UMS. He podido ver los resultados del informe fiscal y dice que nuestros niños no están progresando académicamente y saben que no estoy sorprendida. Lo que ese reporte nos dice es que diariamente ofrecemos apoyo a nuestros estudiantes en diferentes áreas. Somos maestros, consejeros, amigos, e incluso padres. Porque muchos de nuestros estudiantes están solos aquí, sin sus padres, sin sus hermanos. Solo nos tienen a nosotros. La escuela no ha podido cumplir con apoya- eh, contratar personal de apoyo que pueda comunicarse con ellos. Muchos están lidiando con su salud emocional, un nuevo lenguaje más el contenido académico. Muchos de ellos salen de la escuela para ir a trabajar y pagar una deuda que supuestamente les iba a garantizar la felicidad. Actualmente soy parte del comité de Spanish Language Arts de español y sé que el distrito ha dirigido sus recursos para ofrecernos el apoyo que ellos han podido. Pero necesitamos ser un solo programa desde pre-kinder hasta duodécimo. Tener una sola visión y un currículo secuencial que garantice continuidad. Estoy confiada de que nuestro esfuerzo va a ayudar a que nuestra comunidad tenga una educación bilingüe y que más allá nuestros niños puedan competir en un mundo globalizado. Tenemos la energía, tenemos la motivación para hacer nuestro trabajo y sé que lo podemos lograr juntos. Gracias. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Rob Bennett?
Hello, everyone. Is there a cigar? Hello, hello? Let's take one, two, three. Hey, I'm Rob Bennett. I'm an Urbana, uh, resident and a proud parent in the Urbana schools. Um, want to talk with you all this evening, uh, most of let the board know, but of course, anybody watching on UPTV six, uh, this evening for the live stream, uh, that the group, uh, that I've been proud to work with over these last few months, since the February vote to close Wiley, uh, informally known as Wiley Strong, Better Together, or is referred to as a lot of different things. But I'm very proud to announce that we are changing our, we're rebranding, and we're also repurposing a little bit. Our group is gonna be heretofore known as, uh, Better With Us, and that's an acronym. Uh, Better With Us, and I'm very proud of this name because about ten to twelve of us sort of brainstormed over this name over the last few weeks, and I think it really represents what we are hoping to do and hoping to achieve by rebranding ourselves and repurposing ourselves. But Better With Us stands for Building Education Together Through Enhanced Relations, the relationships, with Urbana schools. So, I'm still getting that one. Building education together through enhanced relationships with Urbana schools. And whether you decompress that thing out to its full length or acronymify it, I think this really has a, has a, a lot of things to say. We want to build education together with the board, with the administration. Uh, we wanna do that by achieving better communications, building enhanced relationships with Urbana schools. And when you put it all together, you know, we are very firmly of the belief that you can't build a great public education system without community voice, uh, community voice says. And so the Better With Us part, we think this is gonna be a better conversation with us, firmly in it. So, uh, we do have a website up. It's very primitive at the moment. It's gonna be enhanced over the coming weeks, betterwithus.org. And that's gonna be important in just a moment. Um, one of our inaugural projects that we're, we'd like to talk about, um, since we do have at least some origins in, uh, being a bunch of Wiley parents, and of course, everyone is, is welcome to come to us at Better With, Better With Us and, and voice your concerns. But we are, uh, wanting to help out Wiley educators who still need to pack up their classrooms. And along those lines, we've got our inaugural prog- um, program called Pack a Coyote, 'cause they're the Wiley coyotes. They travel in packs. We're gonna pack them. Pack a Coyote. And the way this is gonna work is, hopefully, if there is any educators, any staff members or faculty members at Wiley presently who would like any help packing up their classrooms, uh, in the coming weeks, reach out to us at Pack a Coyote, that's with or without the dashes, at betterwithus.org. And we will also be happy to connect you with any community members who have reached out to us at the same address. So basically, whether you're a community member out there that wants to help out with packing, or if you're a teacher from Wiley who wants a little help packing, feel free to reach out to Pack a Coyote at, uh, betterwithus.org, and we will have some things on our Facebook page coming up. Uh, one other thing I wanted to sort of mention, it would be a dream of ours uh, to, again, initiate better conversations, more frequent conversations with the board. And to that end, uh, while we haven't got a plan, we'd like to sort of talk with the board about it and have you all consider it, especially those of you who are new members. We know there are things like the Open Meetings Act and, and what have you to take into account. We already know that you're putting in a huge obligation and unpaid labor of love just to be on this board. But we would like to invite you in the coming weeks or months to join us for regular conversations. And again, our hope is that we can bring together different areas of the Urbana community and bring their concerns, so then we don't have them sort of ramrod through five minutes of public comment every few business meetings. So I'd like to ask you as a board to consider that issue. How would you like to speak with us, um, those of us who are gonna be joining with betterwithus.org in the future? Um, we'd love to have more open conversations and more time to talk with you. So, all right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate that. Uh, Shayla Matuka?
Good evening. My name is Janelle Hardy. I'm sorry, Shayla Matuka. Um, had, couldn't be with us for the remainder of the meeting. Um, on behalf of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Epsilon Epsilon Omega Chapter and the Winding Ivy Community Development Foundation Incorporated, I'd like to read a resolution. Whereas the Winding Ivy Community Development Foundation Incorporated, in partnership with the Epsilon Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, provides scholarships to high school female graduates in support of their journey as college-bound women. And whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was founded on January fifteenth, nineteen oh eight, at Howard University in Washington, DC, and has since grown to become the oldest and largest African-American sorority in the world. And whereas in nineteen fourteen, the first scholarship awarded by Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was to a liberal arts student at Howard University in the amount of ten dollars. And whereas the combined efforts of our local organizations have allowed us to provide more than four hundred scholarships to totaling over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars since nineteen sixty within our local service areas of Champaign and Vermillion Counties. Whereas for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic year, our organizations will provide a total of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars in scholarships to seventeen female graduates across seven high schools in our service area. And whereas the following high school seniors in the Urbana School District Number One Sixteen in the twenty twenty-three graduating class are being acknowledged as recipients of this year's scholarships. Simone Gilbert, Amari Johnson, Kiara Johnson, and Haley Thompson, all from Urbana High School. And whereas these young ladies have shown through their academic, extracurricular, and community-based activities that they've cultivated a desire to further their education and will use their gifts and talents to create their destiny on a path to enriching their community and the lives of those that they will encounter. Now therefore be it resolved that the Winding Ivy Community Development Foundation Incorporated, in partnership with the Epsilon Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, are committed to supporting philanthropic ventures that improve our local and global communities. And be it further resolved that the Winding Ivy Community Development Foundation Incorporated and the Epsilon Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated will remain dedicated to sponsoring events to provide scholarships to area high school girls to supporting their educational goals and achievements as they become college-bound women. Presented this sixteenth day of May in the year of two, two thousand twenty-three at the business meeting of the Board of Education of the Urbana School District Number One Sixteen, respectfully submitted by Shayla Matuka, our president. And we will submit an electronic copy of this resolution to the board. Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful news. Uh, last up is Ricardo Diaz. If anybody else would like to make a statement for the board, please fill out a form in the back of the room and hand it to our recording secretary.
If you'll permit, primero para los padres, uh, del distrito. Uh, aquí estamos, somos parte del sistema, y el día de hoy, aunque no sea fácil, uh, vamos a seguir estar presentes aquí con su voz. Hemos formado un grupo que se llama Familia Familia. El día trece de junio tendremos una reunión donde esperamos juntar nuestras voces para poder expresarnos aquí y en otros lugares donde tenemos que expresarnos. Uh, todo esto nos incumbe. Tenemos que estar, uh, presentes, y esperamos que en conjunto podemos hacerlo. Las decisiones que están, que aquí se toman también son nuestras. Y el día de hoy, uh, bueno, el día trece repasaremos algunos de los datos que hoy se van a presentar aquí de una manera más, uh, más comprensible. Y por último, damos la bienvenida a la nueva miembro del Consejo que es, uh, nuestra compañera Sitlali.
I'm here today, uh, as representative, as co-chair of the new B-PAC that started last November, uh, as a result of all the DL conversation. As some of you know, um, we're established, we are required, uh, to have a B-PAC in our forming in November. Uh, since then, we've had about four meetings, about thirty people have come and gone. Uh, and our functions, uh, are both stipulated, uh, by state law, but also we have other duties that we've taken out. But if you're gonna do anything today to take about, uh, the dual language, Brianna's work is excellent. Uh, it's worth a read. She's not only smart, but she's soft as she presents. She does not want to be, uh, pushy, but she, in my opinion, she should. She's got good stuff. But when it comes to the state law as to the B-PAC existing, I wanna read a section of it because I think that we often forget, and we certainly have forgotten until the new existence how we are. But one oh five Illinois law, uh, and you can look at the numbers in her paperwork, but, uh, it says, "Each school district shall accordingly establish a parent advisory committee which affords parents the opportunity effectively to express their views and which ensures that such programs are planned, operated, and evaluated with the involvement of and in consultation with parents of children served by the programs." I think if you hear that, it really hurts to look at what the evaluation today brings and how little the parents have been present, the ones most affected. The paragraph of the law says, "Once established, the committee shall autonomously carry out..." the committee shall autonomously carry out their affairs, including the election of officers and the establishment of internal rules, guidelines, and procedures." In the November meeting, we chose five people to be the leaders of B-PAC. We didn't have to establish the officers yet. We chose five people to start congregating us and to establish some of these rules. One of these was that we have our meetings en español. It is necessary to include especially them. But any of you are welcome, and I promise, with all due respect to misuro, that we would have a language access for you so that you would be able to understand what we're talking about and why, what we're thinking. Couple more thoughts because it's our obligation to also refer to what it is that we do. Today, this report from the Center for Applied Linguistics shows that in spite of the totals, there's individual variance. There are some students that are succeeding. But in general academically, let's just say that our students in the bilingual program won't be going to the ULI. The sad part is, is that most of the students in Urbana don't qualify either. So they won't be going either. If you will, the best part is that the Spanish-speaking parents won't know. They don't know that. This report is not in writing in Spanish, neither will the slides. And it's very hard for them to listen. As hard as those first 40 minutes were for the English-speaking ear, imagine yourself in the Spanish-speaking ear. They won't know unless we have a functional B-PAC. Let me finish with commenting on the report directly. The slowdown for the one-school model in December turns out to be a blessing because now we have data, which we were crying for back then, and now it's certified. Unfortunately, it's coming from an outside source. We should have been handling the data inside enough to be prepared for such from the, I forget what you call it, but the all-school plan that will also be presented tonight. I think it's like page 38, 39 of the section that probably you'll see in a little bit. Well, maybe withdrawn. The thing that impressed me is that there's over 800 students that are being served. The liaisons for these students are exactly, for the Spanish side, exactly three. These people, employees, do translations. They'll do interpretations. They're in charge, not just now, of the Spanish-speaking students, but all the, being the liaison for all the parents in the school. I don't know if they're assigned, but they've been at the B-PAC. And if you add the list of those support personnel, I say to myself, a 6% raise for everybody, is that enough for them? Or can we afford another $35,000 for each one of those so that we can actually serve the people that we are mandated and that we are receiving money for and that the plan requests money for grants to do? Lastly, the academic part that's presented in the report today has very little part of the social success of the dual-language program. In fact, I don't know, and I'm not, and I don't have to be the expert, but certainly there's a lot of social progress today, given the previous program that we had. It's a bilingual program that's doing better than what we did before. But if you believe the numbers that you will see today and you see today in that program, we have about 10 cohorts of students not meeting expectations in the most part. 10 groups of students that have gone to mostly, all the way to high school, not meeting expectation. And sadly, it's not just the students then, because we have to look where it's placed, that the dual-language program is not meeting expectation. And I hope that we do much better than that, and I hope the B-PAC is able to aid in that. Thank you.
One last call for public statements. All right, thank you. That concludes our public statements. Is there, there is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended? Again, we are removing the action item for the May 9th Facilities Committee Minutes, and we're removing action item 12 dot 4, the Consolidated District Plan. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
A move for approval with amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Our first administrative report tonight is going to be the dual-language program evaluation.
Hi Lisa, thank you for joining us. I think you're up.
Hello, is it my turn? It's my turn?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I need to share my screen. Can someone let me share? It says Host Disabled Participant Screen Sharing.
Go ahead, try it now. You should have it.
There we go. Okay. You should see my screen, is that right?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
I'm just gonna put in presenter mode. Am I good? Okay, I was hoping that my colleague, Melissa Amos, was going to be with me. Is she trying to get into the room? Why didn't you?
If somebody who speaks Spanish at home only wants to watch this at a later time, they need interpretation. I cannot predict that there will be no Spanish speakers that ever want to watch this, but I suspect they do.
Yes, yes, please, we need translation.
Okay, all I hear is garbled speech. I can't understand what anyone is saying. But is it time for me? Shall I start or what? I'm sorry.
Yep, yep, I think you can go ahead.
Maybe.
And if you can pause after each slide, we're gonna do a Spanish translation.
Okay, I guess we'll start. Hi, Melissa. I'm having trouble hearing people. It's just garbled, but I'm just gonna proceed, I guess. Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Tabaku. I'm the Director for Dual Language and Multilingual Education at the Center for Applied Linguistics. And I have Melissa Amos, who performed the data analysis with the data that we received from USD. So I understand you're providing interpretation. So should I stop after intervals, or is there some way I can see the room or?
Yes, can you pause between slides or at stopping points?
Can you understand what they're saying, Melissa?
John, could you just message her over text?
Okay, I'm gonna proceed and hope for the best here. Okay, so what are we presenting tonight? Of course, I just introduced ourselves. We'll look at what the research questions were that Urbana asked us to respond to, look a little bit at the methods we used, and then look at the description of the population in the dual-language programs, their performance of students, and look at a few conclusions, commendations, and recommendations. There's a lot more in the report itself. But we're going to provide a few highlights, and then perhaps there'll be Q and A. I don't know if I'll be able to understand you, we'll see. Okay, so I just snuck in a couple slides so that you're maybe familiar with the Center for Applied Linguistics. We're a private nonprofit organization, albeit located in Washington, DC. We've been around for more than 60 years. So we have been at the table for many, many years since the first Bilingual Education Act, walking the path to promote and and help support dual-language programs for many years. Our mission is to promote language learning and cultural understanding. We do research, policy analysis, we provide services. That's not a problem. I can hear you, which is fabulous. The first person I can hear. Yeah, if you want to, just, I'll stop, yeah.
I don't have that. I only have the agenda and number three is evaluation. No, but she's talking about the mission. I don't have that. You have that?
Oh, I snuck these in. I'm just talking about, I thought people might be interested in knowing, you know, who's the, what is the Center for Applied Linguistics? This isn't the report and the findings, so... I'll continue then.
Bueno, la persona que está hablando es la señora Lisa Tabaku, que es la directora de la división de lenguaje dual y de educación multilingüe. Y estaba haciendo una pequeña descripción sobre el centro CAL, que es Centro para Linguistic, the Applied Linguistics. Sorry, I don't have that information.
Gracias. Okay, so what were our evaluation questions? Well, we were looking at policies and practices for serving multilingual learners. And we're gonna define that term on the next slide in the dual lang. We're looking at, of course, multilingual learners in dual-language programs. And are those policies and practices representative of research-based, effective, and equitable practices? And are those policies and practices implemented appropriately? We looked at performance data that I said was made available to us. How are multilingual learners in dual-language programs performing academically and linguistically? And in comparison to students who are not identified as English learners/multilingual learners in those programs. And then we talked to a lot of people, staff particularly, and asked them what they think is working well and what they think needs improvement.
So primero que nada mencionaron la agenda, en la agenda se incluye la presentación. Van a hablar sobre las preguntas que se tomaron en cuenta para la investigación, la metodología, las personas que se, perdón, la descripción del programa de lenguaje dual y el rendimiento. Después, conclusiones y recomendaciones, y van a hablar también sobre algunas preguntas y dar respuesta a preguntas. Algunas de las preguntas de la evaluación incluyeron si las pólizas y las prácticas de los estudiantes multilingües y los programas, en programas duales, son representativas de prácticas basadas en investigación que son efectivas y equitativas para estudiantes multilingües, y si las pólizas y las prácticas son implementadas apropiadamente. También basado en la información que se ofreció del distrito escolar que se hizo disponible para este centro de CAL para analizarlo, cómo están los programas de lenguaje dual y estudiantes multilingües rindiendo académicamente y lingüísticamente, y en comparación con otros estudiantes que no han estado en estos programas. Y también se reunieron y hablaron con personal y otras personas que estaban parte del distrito para tomar su punto de vista sobre lo que está trabajando bien y lo que necesita mejorar en el programa.
And what we might note here is that we were not asked to weigh in in any way on closing any schools. Our responsibility was to look at the program and is the program serving multilingual learners well?
Que algo quiere ella anotar es que en este proceso no se ha hablado sobre cerrar escuelas, sino qué es lo que está funcionando en el programa bien y qué es lo que necesita mejorar.
So as I said, the terminology, so we're using some terms for the students. Multilingual learner is the preferred term, understandably, by Urbana School District, for a student who's not yet fully proficient in English and is identified to receive language assistance services. The federal government still uses the term English learner, but many districts are moving to using multilingual learner to look at the students from an assets perspective, right? They are more than just learners who are learning English. So in order to speak about, speak to students who are not in that multilingual learner category, we use not multilingual learner, non-multilingual learner. And these are students who are not identified as English learners. There are students who are proficient in English, including but not exclusively, of course, native English speakers because there are many people and children who are not native English speakers and who are proficient in English, right?
Hablando un poco sobre la terminología, ellos describieron a los estudiantes en inglés multilingual learners, estudiantes multilingües, como un estudiante que aún todavía no es completamente proficiente en inglés y que está identificado para recibir asistencia y servicios de lenguaje. Y el multilingual learner, en el documento dicen non-ML, lo identificaron como un estudiante que es completamente proficiente en inglés, incluyendo pero no exclusivamente a estudiantes nacidos y que hablan inglés como su primer idioma.
And so we also have some terms here that we used when we looked at the data. And those are ever multilingual learner, or ever-ML. And that is a current or former student. those are ever multilingual learner, or ever ML, and that is a current or former student with the status of English learner or multilingual learner. And never multilingual learner is a student who's never been identified as an English learner or multilingual learner.
So, para el propósito de esta presentación, se va a definir a un estudiante, que, a un estudiante multilingüe, como un estudiante que actualmente está aprendiendo inglés y que está aprendiendo inglés, y se va a definir a un estudiante que nunca ha sido un estudiante multilingüe, como un estudiante que nunca ha sido identificado como un estudiante que necesita aprender inglés, o que ha sido estudiante multilingüe.
So, the theoretical framework that we used for this review is the third edition of the Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education by Howard et al. It was a mixed methods. We looked, we did a qualitative review and a quantitative review. First, we collected program descriptions from school leadership that told us about how the programs worked, and then we conducted staff and parent focus groups. We interviewed 61 different personnel, central office, school-based, DL teachers, elementary level, monolingual program teachers, as well as more parents were invited, but we had two groups of parents, one Spanish-speaking and one English-speaking, four Spanish-speaking parents were represented and eight English-speaking. It's not a huge, that was a limitation of the study. However, interestingly, what the parents had to say was corroborated by a good deal of what we heard in other ways or what we saw. So, we also spent time, and very appreciative of the welcome we received in Urbana schools. We went to each of the schools, we absorbed the school climate, we observed the languages being used throughout the buildings and in the classrooms, and we looked at classroom instructional practices. And then we also did a quantitative review based on linguistic and academic performance data from USD. We looked at state math and English language arts assessments for ever multilingual learners and never multilingual learners. We looked at MAP reading in Spanish for ever multilingual learners and never MLs, and we looked at access English proficiency scores for multilingual learners.
Yes, please, could you pause a little more frequently? And can you hear us a little better now? If you check the chat.
If you can write things in the chat.
Yep, I just put it in the chat.
I would maybe be able to understand you.
Metodología, el marco teórico que se utilizó fueron la guía de principios para la educación del lenguaje dual. Se hizo una revisión de calidad donde se reportaron, donde se, donde se utilizaron descripciones que se, que se entregaron de los líderes del distrito. Se llevaron a cabo también grupos de enfoque con personal del distrito y padres, y se hicieron visitas a escuelas donde se observó el clima en general de la escuela, el uso del lenguaje y la instrucción que se estaba llevando a cabo en diferentes clases. También se hizo una revisión cuantitativa, donde se revisó la, el rendimiento académico y lingüístico basado en información que se recibió del distrito. Se revisaron los, las evaluaciones estatales en matemáticas y en inglés para ambos grupos, estudiantes que están aprendiendo inglés como segundo lenguaje y estudiantes que no son multilingües. Se revisó también el, la evaluación o el examen MAP en español para, para ambos grupos, y el, la proficiencia en inglés a través del examen access para los estudiantes multilingües.
Okay, so we first looked at the, just at the description of the students who are in the program. So we, we looked at the students in dual-language and not-dual-language programs in the four program schools, looked at their grade levels, the numbers by grade in dual-language students, the numbers that are, that the students were not in the dual-language, because you have a strand program, which means that, you know, there's a program that exists side by side with the non-dual program. And we looked at the percentages then of the overall population of dual-language and non-dual-language students by grade level in these four schools.
Subvieron a los estudiantes en los programas de lenguaje dual y en programas que no, no son de lenguaje dual en las cuatro escuelas. En la escuela Léa, Dr. Williams, Middle School and High School, y en la, de acuerdo a su, las diferentes categorías fueron el grado, el número de estudiantes en el programa dual, y el porcentaje, y así mismo con los estudiantes que no son estudiantes multilingües, el número de estudiantes, el porcentaje para llegar a un total de estudiantes.
So, from this, we're seeing that at LEO, dual-language students make up 55% of the total population. Non-dual-language learners make up 45%. At Dr. Williams, dual-language students make up 42% of the total, and non-dual 58%. So there are fewer students percentage-wise in DL at Dr. Williams than at LEO. And at the middle school and high schools, the percentage of students in DL is small compared to the overall population.
El porcentaje de estudiantes en el programa dual en la escuela Léa fue 55%, comparado con 45% que fue, el número, el porcentaje de estudiantes que no son parte del programa dual. En la escuela Dr. Williams, el porcentaje es de 42% que están en el programa dual, comparado con 58% que no son parte del programa, y en la escuela Middle School, 20%, y en Urbana High School, 12%, lo cual indica que son porcentajes más bajos que en el nivel primario.
Okay, so we also looked at ethnicity, at least from the perspective of whether the students are Hispanic, Latinee, or not Hispanic, Latinee, in the dual, dual program and the non-dual program. So we looked by school, and then we looked at the actual count of the students in dual-language, the percentage of the total, and then the non-dual-language students' count, and the percentage of the total population of students. And at LAL, and interestingly, although they have different overall numbers, they both, 88% of the total Latinee students enrolled are in dual-language. Non-Latinee make up 38% of the total. At Dr. Williams, oh wait, that was at LEO, non-Latinee make up 38% of the total of non-Latinee in the, in the, in the, oh wait, what am I saying? Sorry. I'm only a little tired. What?
I was jumping in here, Lisa. So this is showing for each row, the first one at LAL Elementary, of Hispanic and Latinee students, 88% of them are in the dual-language program, while 12% are in the non-dual-language program. At Dr. Preston Williams, of the Latnese students, 88% are in the dual-language program, 12% are not. Then continuing on for the middle school, 69% of Hispanic slash Latinee students are in the program, 31% are not. And then at the high school, 54% of Hispanic and Latinee students are in the dual program, 46% are not.
También se revisó la identidad de los estudiantes, estudiantes que son parte del programa dual y los que no son parte del programa dual. En la escuela Léa, el 88% de los estudiantes que están en el programa dual son latinos, y el 12% son estudiantes que no están en el programa dual. En la escuela Preston Williams, 88% de estudiantes latinos son a parte del lenguaje dual, y 12% son, no son parte del lenguaje dual. En Urbana Middle School, 69% son de estudiantes latinos, son parte del programa dual, 31% no lo son, y en Urbana High School, 54% son, de estudiantes son parte del programa dual, y 46% son, no son parte del programa dual.
Okay, so then we also looked at low income in the four schools, and low-income total students are percent of the total. And basically, what we're seeing here is that, you know, large, a large percentage of students at Dr. Williams are low-income, 85%, whereas there are fewer lower, low-income students at LEO, 53%. And then, you know, three-quarters of the students at Urbana Middle School are low-income, and at Urbana High School, you know, more than, more than half.
También analizaron información sobre el estatus económico de los estudiantes, el estatus bajo de económico de los estudiantes. El 53% de estudiantes en LAL son de bajos nive, de bajos nivel económico. En la escuela Dr. Williams es 85% el porcentaje de estudiantes que son de bajo nivel económico, en Urbana Middle School 76%, y en Urbana High School 62%. La escuela Dr. Preston Williams es la que tiene el nivel más alto de estudiantes que son de bajo nivel económico.
So, and then if you look at low-income students in dual programs, at LEO, you have 59%, 123 of the total students in the program are low-income. There, well, there are 86 students in that program that are not low-income, so more, more equal numbers of low income, low income to not low income. Given the large overall population of low-income students at Dr. Williams, you know, we also see that in the dual-language program, where 152 or 83% of the students in the dual program are low-income. And only 32 students, or 17%, are not low-income. You also have high numbers of low-income students in the dual-language program at the middle school, so of the subset of that school, that program, 78% of the students are low-income, and 20, only 22% are not low-income. And at Urbana High School, summarily, there are 100 low-income students in the dual-language program, that's 76%, and 32 students that are not low-income.
Comparando los estudiantes que son de bajos, de bajos recursos, a la escuela Léa tiene 123 estudiantes que son parte del programa, que tienen, son de bajos recursos, y 86 estudiantes que no son de bajos recursos. Los porcentajes son 59% que son bajos recursos, 41% que no son bajos recursos. En la escuela Dr. Williams, estudiantes que son de bajos recursos son 152, y 32 que no son de estudiantes de bajos recursos. Los porcentajes son 83% bajos recursos, 17% no bajos recursos. En la escuela secundaria, Urbana Middle School, son 142 estudiantes que son de bajos recursos, el 78% comparado con 41 estudiantes que no son de bajos recursos, y que es el 22%. Y en Urbana High School, son 100 estudiantes que son de bajos recursos, que es el 76% comparado con 32 estudiantes que no son de bajos recursos, siendo el 24%. Estos son de estudiantes que son parte del programa.
And this is now, looks similar, but this is low-income and non-dual programs by the schools. And there are more not-low-income students in the program than low-income at LEO. At Dr. Williams, 90% of the students in the non-dual program are low-income. And of course, you've got numbers overall for the middle school and the high school, you know, mirror the total populations there, where you've got a large, three-quarters, again, low-income students at the middle school, and 60, about 60% at Urbana High School. So, overall, we're seeing a lot of, you know, schools, these schools, the three of the four schools are serving high, a large number of high-poverty students.
Se analizó también estudiantes de bajos recursos que no son parte del programa de lenguaje dual. En la escuela Léa, 78% de estudiantes son de bajos recursos, es el 46%. En la escuela Dr. Williams, 223 estudiantes que no son parte del lenguaje dual, son de bajos recursos, es el 90%. En la escuela secundaria, Urbana Middle School, 541 estudiantes, son de bajos recursos, es el 76%. Y en Urbana High School, 637 estudiantes, que es el 61%.
And here we have, do you want to explain this one, Melissa? I'm tired.
So this is looking at multilingual learners in the DL and non-DL program at the four DL program schools. This is investigating the students that are currently identified as English or multilingual learners. So at LAL Elementary, in the dual program, 90% of the students that are current English, current English or multilingual learners are in the dual program, 10% of those students are not. And then, students that are not current English or multilingual learners, 36% are in the dual program, 64% are not. At Dr. Preston Williams, a similar story, so 91% of the students that are current English or multilingual learners are in the program, while 9% are not. And then 20% of non-current English multilingual learners are in the program, as opposed to 80% of the students that are not. At Urbana Middle School, 69% of the current English or multilingual learner students are in the dual program, and 31% are not. And then for students that are not current English or multilingual learners, 7% are in the dual program, while 93% are not. And then at Urbana High School, of current English or multilingual learners, 58% are in the dual program, while 42% are not. And then of students that are not current English or multilingual learners, 4% are in the dual program, and 96% are not.
This is gonna be really hard to explain. This is gonna be really hard to explain.
De los estudiantes multilingües que son parte del programa y comparado con los estudiantes que no son parte del programa. Yendo cada, por cada una, viendo cada una de las escuelas. En la escuela Leal, noventa por ciento de estudiantes que son, que están, son estudiantes multilingües, son parte del programa, comparado con diez por ciento que no lo son. En la escuela Dr. Williams, noventa y un por ciento de estudiantes son parte del programa, comparado con nueve por ciento que no lo son. En la escuela secundaria Urbana Middle School, sesenta y nueve por ciento de estudiantes son parte del programa, comparado con treinta y uno por ciento que no lo son. Y en la escuela preparatoria Urbana High School, cincuenta y ocho por ciento de estudiantes son parte del programa dual, comparado con el cuarenta y dos por ciento de estudiantes que no lo son.
So basically, what we're seeing here is that your, your, you know, current status for this current school year, English learners, also called multilingual learners here. You know, they're mainly, in the, in the elementary schools, they're in the dual language program. There are, there are few of them that are not in the dual language program. And, and then at the secondary schools, there are sizable numbers of multilingual learners in the dual programs. And this is probably because, not that the, all of the students came from elementary dual, no, there are too many here for that. But it speaks to the enrollment of multilingual students who didn't attend dual language in elementary school, but are enrolled in a kind of a hybrid dual language ESL program at the secondary level. And they attend dual language classes with students who graduated from dual elementary programs, some classes with them.
Una cosa importante de reconocer en esta gráfica es que el número de estudiantes en el nivel de primaria es más, es alto porque son estudiantes que han sido parte del programa desde el principio. En el nivel secundario y de preparatoria, se ve que los números son más bajos y una de las razones de eso puede ser que hay estudiantes que son parte, se han, han formado parte del programa cuando se han registrado y que no han sido parte del programa desde, desde el inicio, desde kindergarten.
That number would also include any students of other language groups who are still considered English learners. So French speakers, Mandarin Chinese, that's why that number's larger at middle school and high school because those are our only schools and all students attend those schools.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so then we, we also looked at ever and never multilingual learners in this current school year that are in dual and non-dual programs. And so we need to know that, we need to keep in mind that if students were reclassified before school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, they will appear in this data as never multilingual. Because we, we just received data from school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen on. So if students were in, enrolled in USD as a multilingual learner and exited the program before seventeen, eighteen, they will not appear in the data as ever multilingual, which is what they really are. They will appear as never multilingual. So that was sort of a limitation of the data that we received. But what we can say is that all students appear, who appear as ever multilingual are either current multilingual students or were reclassified no earlier than this, than school year seventeen, eighteen. So, do you want to explain this, Melissa? The chart, just go over it.
So yes, it's a similar story as the previous chart. This is looking at, as Lisa mentioned, ever multilingual learners at Lille Elementary of students that are ever multilingual learners, eighty-eight percent of them are in the dual language program, twelve percent are not. Students that have never been classified as a multilingual learner as of two thousand seventeen, eighteen, thirty-two percent of them are in the dual language program, sixty-eight percent are not. At Dr. Preston Williams, eighty-nine percent of students that have been ever multilingual learners are in the dual language program, eleven percent are not. And then nineteen percent of the students in the dual language, I'm sorry, nineteen percent of the students at Dr. Preston Williams that have been classified as never multilingual learners are in the dual language program, eighty-one percent are not. At Urbana Middle School, sixty-three percent of the students that are ever multilingual learners are in the dual language program, thirty-seven percent are not. Of students that have never been classified as multilingual learners, six percent are in the dual language program, ninety-four percent are not. At Urbana High School, of the students that have been classified as ever multilingual learners, forty-eight percent are in the dual program, fifty-two percent are not. And of students that have never been classified as multilingual learners, two percent are in the dual language program and ninety-eight percent are not.
And what we had wanted to look at actually was, we wanted to look at current and former multilingual learners, look at their numbers and then look at their performance. But what we found was, there were way, there were so few former multilingual learners that we wouldn't, wouldn't be able to report on them anyway because the minimum number for reporting public information about student performance is ten, less, less, ten or less, right? And so we needed to combine them then into that group of ever, including, is current and former. Anyway, I forgot the interpreter, yeah.
La siguiente tabla es sobre información sobre estudiantes que siempre, que siempre han sido parte del programa y estudiantes que nunca han sido catalogados como parte de, como estudiantes multilingües. En la escuela Leal, el ochenta y ocho por ciento de estudiantes ha sido catalogado como que siempre ha sido parte, como que siempre han sido estudiantes multilingües, comparado con doce por ciento de estudiantes que no son parte del programa. Treinta y dos por ciento de estudiantes han sido catalogados como que nunca han sido estudiantes multilingües y sesenta y ocho por ciento no son parte del programa. En la escuela Preston Williams, el ochenta y nueve por ciento de estudiantes ha sido, son estudiantes que siempre han sido parte del programa, comparado con once por ciento de estudiantes que nunca han sido parte del programa y el diecinueve por ciento de estudiantes nunca han sido parte del programa, comparado con ochenta y ocho, ochenta y un por ciento de estudiantes, de ochenta y un por ciento que son estudiantes que nunca han estado en el programa dual. En Urbana Middle School, sesenta y tres por ciento de estudiantes han sido siempre catalogados como estudiantes multilingües, comparado y son parte del programa, comparado con treinta y siete por ciento de estudiantes, treinta y siete por ciento que son estudiantes que no han sido parte del programa. Y en la escuela Urbana High School, el cuarenta y ocho por ciento de estudiantes han sido catalogados como estudiantes que siempre han sido parte del programa, comparado con cincuenta y dos por ciento de, que son estudiantes que nunca han sido parte del programa. Dos por ciento de, del, dos por ciento de estudiantes en Urbana High School nunca han sido catalogados como estudiantes multilingües, comparado y noventa y ocho por ciento de estudiantes no han sido parte de el programa dual en ese nivel.
Okay, so here, we're trying to figure out how many students exit, you know, from the multilingual learner, English learner status who are in the dual language program. So we were looking at current status versus not being an English learner by school. And then we were also looking at that ever category, which would be current and former. And of course, you know, never, never multilingual learner. But we wanted to see, we were, we were trying to see if we could tell how many students had exited. And if you look at the difference between the one twenty-one and one thirty-nine, that's eighteen students, that we'd want to say that they perhaps exited. And that's possible at the elementary school because we, remember, we started collecting the data or we started, we had the data, I shouldn't say collecting the data, we were given the data from seventeen, eighteen. So that would have meant by, by fifth grade, you did have an accounting of, of former Ls. So, and at Dr. Williams, though, there were only seven students who were reclassified. There are some caveats to that, though. Did you want to speak to the caveats, Melissa?
I think that one thing we could say, especially for the middle and high school, we did not look specifically at individual students and follow them over time. So we would not be able to confidently say that these are all exits. These could be students that, like I said, at the middle and high schools, entered during, sometime during the pro, I'm sorry, sometime during two thousand seventeen, eighteen through twenty-two, twenty-three and were not classified as ever or never status. So that's why we may see some of these differences. But as Lisa mentioned, at the elementary schools, it could be due to some students exiting EL services over the course of their time at the school.
Right, and, and still, that's very few who are exiting. And that is troubling because that means that the students, if they, if they aren't exiting before they leave elementary school, they're going to middle school as multilingual learners, often long-term English learners who, who then need a great deal of support at secondary.
En esta tabla están analizando los números de estudiantes que han salido del programa. En la escuela Leal, el número de estudiantes en el programa era ciento veintiuno, comparado con el número ciento treinta y nueve en la misma escuela, de estudiantes que nunca fueron parte del programa. En la escuela Dr. Williams, ciento veintitrés, comparado con ciento treinta. Y los números siguen similares. En la escuela secundaria, ciento treinta y uno, ciento cuarenta y dos. Y en Urbana High School, ochenta y ocho, ciento catorce. Y mencionaron que esto es un problema porque si los estudiantes continúan, salen de la primaria y continúan a la sala secundaria siendo todavía parte del programa, no están progresando como, como debieran.
Okay, so now, so that's telling, giving us a picture of the students in those schools that are in dual, that are, you know, not, yeah, that are not in dual and what they're char, some of the characteristics of the students. And now we're gonna move on to looking at student performance outcomes.
Ahora van a hablar sobre los resultados de las evaluaciones.
Okay, so here we have the ELA performance on the reading assessment, the state reading assessment for dual language program students by multilingual learner status for school year twenty-one, twenty-two, which was last school year. And we see if you were a current or former multilingual learner at Lille. You know, we've got red being did not yet meet expectations, two partially meet, the darker blue approached expectations and green is meet, met expectations. And dark blue is exceeded expectations. So I could, I think you can pretty much dramatically see that current and former, of which there are a few multilingual learners, you know, are not doing, do not do well at all. The group that did the best was the Lille never multilingual learner students. And the never multilingual students that, that middle school fared pretty well. So the contrast is stark between the lower performance of ever multilingual learners in all schools compared with higher performance of never multilingual learners, particularly last year, as I said, at Lille and the middle school.
En esta gráfica se ve el rendimiento de estudiantes en el examen de, en una examen de lectura. Y en la escuela Leal, se ve que a dos por ciento de estudiantes llegaron, cubrieron las expectativas de estudiantes que siempre han sido parte del programa, comparado con cuarenta por ciento de estudiantes que nunca han sido parte del programa dual. En la escuela Preston, Dr. Williams, se ve que solamente dos por ciento de estudiantes que han sido parte del programa lograron las expectativas, comparado con veintiséis por ciento de estudiantes que nunca han sido parte del programa. Y en la escuela secundaria, uno por ciento de estudiantes que son parte del programa lograron las expectativas, comparado con tres por ciento de estudiantes que subieron, que alcanzaron mayores expectativas y cuarenta y uno por ciento de estudiantes que llegaron a las expectativas que nunca han sido parte del programa.
And this is the same year last year, but for math performance. And you have quite a similar picture. The lower performance of multilingual learners in math at all three schools. And what, what isn't in our slides, but is in the report was interesting that the math data picture shows multilingual learners doing better in math than they were doing in ELA in the pre-pandemic years. But they're performing equally poorly in math and ELA in the two years following the pandemic. So there's more, there's, there are more figures in, in the report that show a little bit more of the longitudinal picture.
La, esta diapositiva presenta que el desempeño de los estudiantes en la prueba de matemática antes de la pandemia fue mejor que la lectura en inglés, pero después de la pandemia básicamente los estudiantes desempeñaron bajo nivel en ambos, en ambas materias, matemáticas y lectura en inglés.
And this is the performance of ever multilingual learners and never multilingual learners on the map reading in Spanish for all the grades that were tested spring twenty twenty-two. And what you're seeing here is actually on this, this is a Spanish reading test. And at Lille, for example, the never ML, multilingual learners, actually across the board really, never multilingual learners performed, they didn't perform great necessarily at Lille, they performed better than at most, but across the board, non-multilingual learners performed better than ever multilingual learners. So the current and, and former. And most of them are Spanish speakers. So this isn't a good picture.
En esta diapositiva se está presentando los resultados de las escuelas con relación a la lectura en español de los estudiantes que fueron siempre aprendices del idioma o multiling- aprendices del idioma o multi, o multilingüe y los que nunca han sido aprendices del inglés. Y lo que presenta en la lectura es que básicamente los que nunca fueron eh, aprendices del inglés ejecutaron mejor que los que son nativos hablantes del español.
And then this is the, just the current uh, level of uh, proficiency in English of multilingual learners on the Access for Ls English Language Proficiency Test. So, um, uh, something to note here, um, eh, is that, um, that Dr. Williams has more Level One students and consistently more entering multilingual learners than the other schools for each year. Uh, if you look at the other, other years that we have of data, um, which are, are in the report. Um, uh, and we, we're not, we didn't look at any kind of growth, uh, because we couldn't. Because we don't know if, when the students entered the program in order to be able to determine where they were when they started, to know how much progress have they, have they made. So it's just a snapshot of the proficiency levels at each school for those years that we had seventeen, eighteen until twenty-one, twenty-two.
La presente diapositiva explica que los resultados de la prueba Access eh, donde se identifica la escuela Preston Williams como la escuela que mayor estudiantes tiene, la categoría número uno. Eh, y se puede ver ese mismo patrón durante los años. Eh, no es una, esta información no presenta una comparativa porque no tienen información de crecimiento en cuanto los estudiantes entraron, eh, pero sí se ve como un, eh, como un patrón de que la escuela pues está desempeñándose más bajo en, en comparación con las demás.
So, something that this is, could be useful for is to take this data about where the, uh, the um, English learners or multilingual learners are and look at how their, what their proficiency level is up against how they performed on the state tests. Because what you would be like, more likely to see is um, schools that have greater numbers of students at the very low proficiency levels, they are going, not going to do that well on those state tests. But where you have students that are already at the higher levels of proficiency and uh, for ever Ls also have former Ls in that category, then you're expect, expecting to see better performance on those state tests.
Uh-huh, we didn't get this information.
No, maybe what I said, I was just saying, what is the value of this? We just took a snapshot, we can't tell, uh, you know, for example, we can't really tell, look at, there are quite a few students or, or very few students in middle and high school of multilingual learners that are at the expanding or higher level. Uh, they're at the entering, emerging, or still developing levels. But we don't know who those students are, we didn't, we don't have the data to say are those, how many of those students just came and enrolled in the school and came from other countries recently, new, new arrivals? And how many of those students actually have been in uh, Urbana School District since their early years? We, we don't have that information to say that. So I just said, what use would this be? It would be just to be able to tell, eh, you know, what the challenges are that a student, that a, a school is facing with a, a large numbers of students who are at the very beginning uh, uh, levels of, of learning, um, English.
Básicamente, básicamente es una explicación de eh, que la información que tenemos o que tuvieron ellos para preparar el informe, eh, pudieron presentar como una pequeña fotografía, ¿verdad?, de lo que, una pequeña representación. Porque había información que no estaba disponible, como por ejemplo cuando esos estudiantes en eh, matricularon, de qué, de dónde, qué background este, o qué trasfondo tenían. Y por eso pues la comparación del crecimiento de los estudiantes pues no se puede hacer tan, tan certera, ¿verdad? Pero este, básicamente es lo que ella está este, aclarando.
All right, I need, uh, Melissa to explain what we did here, because it's so convoluted today. Sure, yeah.
Sure, so this graph is showing information for students that are in currently the eleventh grade. They started the dual language program in the first grade. Um, this is the last time that they took the IAR assessment, and this is looking at their ELA performance. So for students that are considered ever Ls, uh, the majority of, well, not the majority, but a great number of them are in the did not yet meet expectations category when they took the test in eighteen, nineteen. Um, while the majority of students, all of students that were never multilingual learners are at the met expectations mark. However, I will note here that the in counts for these two groups are different. As you can see, for students that are considered never multilingual learners, there are less than ten students in that group, where there are twenty-one students in the ever multilingual learner uh, group.
En estas gráficas están hablando sobre la evaluación IAR de inglés que presentaron estudiantes que están en el onceavo grado. Y como se puede ver, eh, los estudiantes que nunca han sido parte del programa, el cien por ciento de ellos están en, cubrieron con las expectativas esperadas, comparado con estudiantes que siempre han sido parte del programa, que un gran porcentaje de ellos, no puedo ver el número, ¿qué número es? Treinta y ocho por ciento no cubrió con las expectativas, um, de, de, que se esperaban. Y esto es de estudiantes que estaban, que son parte de, que han sido parte del programa desde, desde el primer grado.
Okay, and this is the same uh, scenario uh, but for math. So, you know, these students are now in eleventh grade. The last time they took this assessment was in seventh grade. And they were the first cohort in dual language programs to start in first grade.
Esta diapositiva presenta la, básicamente la misma información, pero para matemática, para el examen de matemática, de las pruebas estatales. Eh, los estudiantes que son considerados aprendices del idioma obtuvieron unas puntuaciones más variadas. Eh, mientras que los que nunca fueron considerados o clasificados como aprendices del idioma eh, dominaron o cumplieron con la expectativa. Eh, nuevamente estos estudiantes están en grado once y estuvieron en el programa de este primer grado.
So, I mean, as, um, Melissa said, you know, the the cat, the never multilingual, very small number was less than ten. Um, but what is still startling is that you've got your ever multilingual learners who were in the program since first grade. And then here they're in seventh grade. And none of them are at meet, meet expectations um, on this math assessment.
Es importante recalcar que la cantidad de estudiantes en, en ambas columnas eh, varía porque la, los estudiantes que nunca fueron clasificados como aprendices del idioma eh, eh, son menor la cantidad. Pero eh, lo importante es verdad que los que fueron considerados como eh, clasificados como aprendices del idioma pues no han logrado cumplir con la expectativa.
And the question is, how are they doing if they're still in school? How are they doing now that they're ele, in eleventh grade, but we didn't have, uh, there was no, uh?
So, students take the IAR between grades, uh, three and eight. If I'm recalling correctly, I also want to make a note that this is from students that are currently in the eleventh grade, have been enrolled in the dual program since first grade. We're looking at their scores in eighteen, nineteen, because when they're like official last year would have been for eighth grade was nineteen, twenty, and that year was impacted by the pandemic. So students did not test uh, for that year.
Esta información se tomó eh, de los resultados de la prueba eh, de, bueno, las pruebas se dan en, de tercero a octavo grado y se tomó la información de cuando ellos estuvieron en octavo por eh, por la interrupción de la pandemia.
Okay, and then we have the, we did, we did the same thing uh, for what is currently tenth grade. They, you know, I don't know, we don't know if they're still here or anything, that they would be, they would be tenth graders now. And the results of the eighth grade IAR ELA assessment um, who were enrolled in the DL program in kinder, they were the first group of kinder students.
Estos resultados son de los estudiantes que se supone que ahora estén en décimo grado. Nuevamente los resultados son de octavo, cuando ellos tomaron la prueba en octavo grado. Y este grupo comenzó en el programa dual en kindergarten.
But they, now they're small numbers. Uh, as you can see, both, both categories are less than ten.
Ambas categorías, no.
Yeah.
Ambas categorías son eh, tienen bajos eh, bajas cantidades, como puedes ver, también, menos de diez.
But there are students who, after those many years, a few students who didn't meet expectations at all for that ELA test in.
I want to make a note here that this is dur, like this is the year after the pandemic. So this is after one year of not taking the assessment and then, like, going back to like remote hybrid kind of school situation. So this assessment was taken a year after the pandemic. I also believe that in Illinois, you all had the option for students to come in to test. So this may not capture everyone that's in this population if they did not opt in to physically come in to take the assessment.
Le gustaría resaltar que esta, estos resultados son de la prueba que se administró después de la pandemia. Eh, muchos estudiantes fueron invitados a participar físicamente en los edificios, pero no todos fueron. Así que posiblemente pues la cantidad no representa la cantidad total de los estudiantes que debieron haber tomado la prueba.
And this was the math, it was the same, you know, comparable circumstances, but with the math test.
Básicamente es la misma situación, pero en la prueba de matemática. Estudiantes de, que se supone que estén en décimo grado ahora mismo y los resultados son de cuando tomaron la prueba en octavo grado.
Okay. So, some of the conclusions, uh, from the analysis of the performance outcomes. Uh, you know, we're seeing disparities in performance, especially by socioeconomic status.
Tenemos unas conclusiones, podemos ver eh, un desempeño eh, disparate especialmente eh, cuando hablamos de estado socioeconómico.
Uh, we're showing poor, there's poor performance on the MAP Spanish reading test for all students, but especially for, um, native Spanish speakers.
Vemos un pobre desempeño en las, en las pruebas de español, de lectura en español de todos los estudiantes en general, pero especialmente en aquellos que son nativos hispanohablantes.
And we showed less than great stellar performance by all dual language students now in tenth grade who were in the first cohort of kinder. But we have to, you know, there are those caveats to that, though, too. So less, not, the, the DL students who are now in tenth, would now be in tenth grade who were in the first cohort did not perform very well on the, on those uh, state assessments.
Nos ha visto un desempeño eh, bueno de los estudiantes del dual que ahora están en décimo grado y que comenzaron en el programa desde kinder.
And then, um, I think I mentioned this before, there's so few multilingual learners who are in the former never multilingual category in fifth grade that it doesn't appear that multilingual learners are exiting the program before they leave elementary and therefore go on to secondary as long-term Ls with greater needs for support.
Hay algunos estudiantes que fueron clasificados como aprendices del idioma eh, que fueron, que estuvieron en la categoría de nunca eh, multilingües, en la categoría en quinto grado y no aparecen como, como que no aparece como que han salido del programa, por lo tanto, aparece, del programa de escuela elemental, por lo tanto parece que los estudiantes siguen a la secu, a la escuela secundaria siendo parte del programa con, como estudiantes que están aprendiendo aún inglés como segundo idioma y que tienen necesidades muy grandes de apoyo.
Okay, so this concludes the, the descriptive uh, data um, of the population and the performance data. And then we're gonna move into the uh, qualitative review. Um, so Melissa, I think I promised that you could leave if you you didn't want to stay beyond this point.
I just wanted to check if there are any questions about anything before I sign off.
En la sección de preguntas, están esperando por ver si alguien tiene alguna pregunta.
No, there don't appear to be any questions from the board.
No hay preguntas de los miembros del board.
We can understand. Somebody has to put it in the chat. Okay, okay, perfect, okay. All right, thank you so much, Melissa. I owe you one. Okay, um, all right, so, um, uh, so what, we'd like to look at commendations, you know, from the qualitative review. Uh, um, you know, the, the, the good things that we, we learned about, uh, the program. Um, despite some, that, that very negative performance data, right? Um, you know, there were some good things happening and probably at the top of the list, oh, not, not probably, definitely at the top of the list was staff and parents who spoke of the dedication of the DL teachers and staff who really worked tirelessly to provide bilingual education to their students, advocate for the program, and provide those, that non-academic support to students and families that goes way beyond the academic.
Pese a los resultados negativos del informe, eh, le gustaría resaltar que no todo es negativo, sino que hay cosas positivas. Eh, por ejemplo, eh, los padres y lo, y el staff habló sobre la educación de los maestros y del staff que trabajan directamente con los estudiantes eh, que abogan por el programa y que proveen apoyo no académico a los estudiantes y las familias. eh que abogan por el programa y que proveen apoyo no académico a los estudiantes y las familias.
Uh teachers use the classroom target languages to a high degree of fidelity in most classrooms. Uh meaning they stick to the language of that classroom whether it's English or Spanish. Um and several teachers are beginning to bridge languages which is a method for showing students um how the languages are similar and how they're different. And that leads to uh better um a better understanding of language and the ability to to learn the language better.
Muchos maestros están utilizando el idioma eh el idioma este meta en en el salón eh con fidelidad y continuidad y muchos maestros o un número de maestros está comenzando a hacer el el enlace entre ambos idiomas lo que permite que los estudiantes comprendan mejor eh y aprendan mejor eh el idioma meta.
Um and then um particularly at one school, uh the staff um and administrators spoke to the positive impact of the program on students that students are having an amazing experience, building a strong community, uh offering socio-emotional support to each other. Um and they saw a deep sense of community as a key strength and benefit. And that was in the one program, that was in um Dr. Williams.
En la escuela Dr. Williams eh fueron enfáticos en que eh los estudiantes han tenido una maravillosa experiencia eh han construido una comunidad fuerte, han apoyado eh socioemocional a los estudiantes en el área socioemocional y eh pueden ver un un profundo sentido de comunidad lo que es la fortaleza y un beneficio del programa eh en esa escuela.
Uh. Are you done? I'm sorry. Um uh the multilingual department um has served as support and advocate for needs of teachers and students in the DL programs. They divert, they deserve to be recognized for that, often working in isolation uh to support the programs.
El departamento de multilenguaje ha servido de apoyo y ha abogado por las necesidades de los maestros y los estudiantes del programa.
Uh many staff spoke to the support they received from the multilingual department, appreciating it very much and they would like to have more.
Los maestros han hablado sobre el apoyo que han recibido del departamento y apri- y aprecian y a apreciarían tener este más apoyo.
Um. The staff stated that they receive materials in Spanish when they ask for them.
El personal del programa dual ha he mencionado que ha recibido materiales en español cuando lo han solicitado.
And the USD Human Resources partners with the multilingual department. Uh they recruit qualified educators and the multilingual office actually takes the major role in bringing teachers from Spain on J one visas.
El departamento de recursos humanos ha eh trabajado para recrutar maestros cualificados y de hecho tienen un programa eh con España para traer maestros cualificados de España con eh visas.
And USD does help dual uh teachers obtain the certification and endorsement they need to teach in the program.
De hecho el distrito ha ayudado a los maestros a obtener el certificado de maestro o el endorsement como maestro bilingüe ah para aquellos que lo necesitan.
Continuing commendations, uh district understands the need to measure growth in the Spanish language too. So they began with that math testing and Spanish reading.
El distrito comprende que tiene necesidad de aumentar el progreso de los estudiantes eh en la lectura en español.
Um and realizing the importance of having a curriculum for Spanish language arts tied to standards, the high school is developing um Spanish language arts curriculum using the new Illinois state standards.
Han comprendido la importancia de tener un currículo eh de arte de lenguaje en español que esté eh alineado a los estándares eh la escuela high school está desarrollando un currículo de arte de lenguaje en español usando los nuevos estándares de español de Illinois.
The middle school is working very hard to meet the needs of many students who can benefit from the bilingual program. Not only students feeding in from the dual uh elementary but also those students who are educated to grade level and can benefit from learn continuing to learn that high level content in their first language.
La escuela intermedia está trabajando fuerte para cumplir con las necesidades de los estudiantes que vienen de eh los programas de de bilingüe. No solo para aquellos estudiantes de este de que vienen de programas dual.
Um the schools provide outreach materials to all families although some families are able to play a more active role in the program than others because of their more advanced circumstances.
Las escuelas han proveído a los maestros de mate- a las familias perdón del dual eh de información para que comprendan que eh juegan un rol importante en la educación de sus estu- de sus hijos.
And then central office and school leaders, they were asked if they would be willing to attend training on fundamentals of effective dual language program. And all but one said yes, one said maybe, so that's positive. But leadership has to understand the programs to be effective leaders.
Y proveer más eh adiestramiento efectivo.
Personal de la oficina central y líderes del distrito se les preguntó si ellos estaban dispuestos a asistir a un entrenamiento en los fundamentos de una programa efectivo de lenguaje dual y todos excepto por uno dijeron que sí. El que dijo eh que no dijo que sí dijo que posiblemente.
Okay, all right, so if we look at uh recommendations, I'm gonna switch to recommendations now. What is to be ameliorated? Okay, um all right, so you know, there's no doubt though um that the programs are ready for change, for much needed change. No matter what happens with the move or no move or whole school or strand school, these programs need a lot of support. Um and they need support in all of the areas that are in the Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education book. Um in the program design, with the curriculum, with their instructional practices, with the assessment and accountability, uh in professional development, um in including families um in the lives of this, in the life of the school. Um and ensuring that these programs get the support and resources they need.
No hay dudas que el programa dual en urbana está listo para o necesita verdad muchos cambios. Eh no importa la decisión de cómo se lleve el programa ya sea consolidando dos escuelas elementales eh en un solo edificio, permaneciendo separadas eh hay que comprender que el programa necesita mejorar en todas las áreas.
So uh you know, especially given the lack of success on the part of many multilingual learners, uh the dual dual programs from elementary to high school would benefit from program design adjustments.
A pesar del poco éxito eh en muchos de los estudiantes clasificados como aprendices del inglés el programa dual desde elemental hasta high school se puede beneficiar de algunos ajustes.
So one consideration might be, uh one recommendation might be uh to change the uh language allocation uh rather than beginning with ninety ten, uh to begin the program with eighty twenty.
Una de las recomendaciones sería a nivel elemental en lugar de eh continuar con noventa diez se podría comenzar con un programa eh o un modelo ochenta veinte.
Um because multilingual learners uh need to develop especially oral English. Uh for the literacy they're they're going to learn in English, they're learning to read and write in the first language in Spanish. But if you have an eighty twenty program, ten percent is specials and then the other ten percent can be devoted to uh literacy development in English but from the point of view of oral, especially oral language, oral academic language development.
Porque los estudiantes eh clasificados como aprendices del inglés necesitan desarrollar literacia en inglés especialmente en el área oral eh y así ese veinte por ciento se podría dividir en literacia y eh desarrollo oral, destrezas orales.
The um and then there's the content language allocation um around Spanish language arts and English language arts having to be taught. And in one school, it was reported, uh the description um was reported to be um that this that um S- Spanish language arts was taught in the early years and then both Spanish language arts and English language art were were taught in the upper elementary years. And one school reported that Spanish language arts was taught all the way through elementary without any English language arts. Um and uh if that's true, then the former school uh was doing what's most effective. Uh that eventually you may learn, the students may learn to read and write first in the in Spanish, in the partner language. But by mid elementary, they need to also have English language arts. And a effect, an effective dual language program offers both Spanish language arts and English language arts for the remaining duration of the program, all the way through, if you're gonna take it through twelfth grade, all the way through the twelfth grade. Because the students, especially those multilingual learners, they need explicit uh development of English and English language arts.
Después de los años iniciales donde la literatura en español y la y la y la clase de español se han enseñado, los estudiantes deben continuar igualmente en clases de español y de inglés, de alfabetización en español y de alfabetización en inglés por la adulación del programa, los estudiantes deben ah de aprender inicialmente la literatura y el lenguaje en español pero también deben ah poder explicar ah y poder poder aprender la la lenguaje y la literatura en inglés.
So if we look at the whole school model versus a strand model, right? Um whole school models are usually more successful than strand models. Um and in my experience, I see this a lot. I see issues that arise from strand that you don't have in a whole school.
Okay, este eh considerando la en comparación de la escuela eh un modelo completo de escuela de en comparación con lo que está ofreciendo urbana eh el la la ella nos dice que ha podido observar que hay mejor éxito en escuelas que proveen un modelo completo, una escuela completa de eh de dual.
And so what are the advantages? They include that the school, the whole school community can have a pure and holistic vision and mission related to the goals for all students in the program, the goals of of dual language education. And everyone can be fully committed to making the program a success.
Una de las ventajas es que la comunidad escolar tiene una visión pura y completa. Eh tienen una misión que está relacionada con las metas de todos los estudiantes en el programa y todo el mundo está comprometido con el el éxito del programa.
So the program can offer that one program, one language allocation model that will ensure all students will have had the same educational benefits through studying each language by the time they reach secondary school.
El programa puede ofrecer eh se puede ofrecer en en un modelo de eh un lenguaje que asegura que todos los estudiantes tengan el mismo beneficio educativo an a través del estudio de cada lenguaje al al mismo tiempo.
Another advantage is that the district office can better support the program with the curriculum, resources, professional development, provision of quality teachers, assessment instruments, data reports. Everything that is needed to sustain an effective program is more easily done in a single school than having separate locations.
Cuando el programa se enfoca en una sola escuela eh se le facilita al distrito proveer el apoyo en cuanto al currículo, los recursos, desarrollo profesional eh tener maestros cualificados, los instrumentos de evaluación y los reportes, es más fácil que tener el programa dividido en varias escuelas.
Uh teachers and leaders are better able to support one another, um the student body and the families.
Los maestros y los líderes eh pueden apoyar mejor uno, se pueden apoyar mejor unos a otros tanto los estudiantes como las familias.
And the students are able to thrive in an environment where equity of language and culture is easier to achieve without the constant influence and kind of domination of English in the school.
Y los estudiantes del programa dual serían eh capaces de desarrollar el idioma en un ambiente eh de mayor equidad eh y donde la cultura sea similar y más fácil para eh lograrlo sin la influencia de la del inglés eh o de la cultura la inglés que la sería la dominante.
And a whole school has a better chance of offsetting that imbalance in our society between high status English and often the lower status of the minoritized partner language of Spanish. And that leads to a school environment and climate where students are more likely to have the motivation and willingness to excel in both program languages.
Un solo modelo es capaz de eh ofrecer un mejor balance en la sociedad en cuanto a eh el estatus socioeconómico y eh lo el estatus minoritario de de los grupos minoritarios. Y los estudiantes van a estar más motivados y, eh, dispuestos a exceder en los, en ambos idiomas.
Now, um, those are recommendations for the elementary, and now we're looking at, uh, secondary. So, we're looking at how there are three distinct populations or profiles of students in the middle and high school. Are you still interpreting, or do I not hear it?
Yes, we just switch interpreters.
Oh, okay, not a problem. We're just saying that the, the secondary program uh, is, has to think about how they are serving three very different populations of students related to dual language programming.
El programa de dual en la secundaria tiene que, verdad, evaluar cómo puede servir tres diferentes culturas y tres diferentes programas de las elementales que están continuando moviéndose a la intermedia, a tratar de, verdad, eh, poder dar las clases en español y las de inglés y también en las dos, um, secciones de contenido como ciencias y estudios sociales.
So, there, the, one of the populations is the students who have been in the program since their early elementary years. And they're continuing to study high-level academic subjects in Spanish classes and in English classes, um, at the least, uh, in two core content areas in each of their four, uh, high school years. And, uh, they're, um, in middle schools as well, in secondary school.
Otra de las cosas que el programa dual en la secundaria tiene que, verdad, evaluar y atender, no solamente son los estudiantes que están en el dual en el programa todo, todo el camino, pero también aquellos estudiantes que acaban de llegar, que no son profesionales en inglés pero tiene, o si, si tienen una educación interrumpida o no interrumpida, y si, o si, si su educación formal fue en español. A pesar de todo esto tienen que aprender a poder, eh, manejar el lenguaje, aprender el lenguaje y también este poder exceder en las clases de inglés como segundo lenguaje para crecer sus habilidades en inglés y eventualmente moverse a las clases de, de inglés del programa dual.
And then there's the second group is students who are participating now in a hybrid dual language ESL program. Uh, where newly arriving students who are not proficient in English but who have uninterrupted formal education in Spanish enroll in some dual language classes to grow their content knowledge in a language they understand while taking ESL classes to grow their English. Um, and these students can often move quickly into the English dual language classes as well. So they take, they can benefit from being in the dual classes with students who have come up from the elementary into the secondary dual language program.
Lo único que voy a añadir es que el programa dual en la secundaria es un beneficio para aquellos estudiantes que acaban de llegar, porque pueden crecer en los ambos lenguajes mucho más rápido que si estuviesen en clases de inglés solamente.
And then the third, uh, profile of student, of multilingual learner is, uh, the student who is recently arrived and the student who has interrupted formal education. So, a stife student, um, and they're in the ESL program. Um, uh, and, um, they're learning, uh, ideally with, with first language support whenever possible. Help them learn English and content. Ensures that academic gaps are filled so they can benefit from high-level academic study. So, some of these students can be integrated into the dual program in middle school, but it's a lot harder in high school for these students to be integrated from the start into the dual program. So usually they need another kind of program, but over time, uh, although they don't have a lot of time, but over time they could be taking part in the hybrid, in, in, in the DL classes.
La tercera población de estudiantes que la secundaria tiene que servir son aquellos estudiantes que llegan con una educación interrumpida en la cual, eh, no, no quizá tengan alguna abundancia en su primer lenguaje o algo, o quizá no tengan casi nada del primer lenguaje. Entonces tenemos que no solamente educarlos en el primer lenguaje, pero también en el lenguaje de inglés para que puedan, verdad, cerrar esa, ese abismo académico que existe y alcanzar los altos niveles de estudio académico. Algunos de estos estudiantes van a estar mucho más listos que otros para moverse al programa dual, como también este cuando pasen a la high school, participar del programa dual en la high school. Sin embargo, algunos estudiantes también se beneficiarían de un programa alterno en la cual puedan graduarse, que incluya años adicionales y más oportunidades creativas para trabajar mientras continúan sus estudios.
Okay. So, um, and then there's the curriculum and resources. Teachers are making up a lot. They're creating their own materials, different teachers are, uh, doing many different things. Um, and so, there's an absolute need for a Spanish language arts curriculum. Optimally, it's paired with an English language arts curriculum, and I understand that's in the works, that there's an adoption now. Um, that's going to happen. Um, and then once there's that curriculum, there's also a scope and sequence that will be needed and pacing charts that will map the Spanish language arts um, and the ELA, uh, curricula, the Spanish and English language arts. So that teachers can teach paired literacy, uh, rather than repeating, uh, repeating content, they learn to work in tandem with each other. Um, so that takes the, that necessitates these curriculum guides.
Con respecto a los recursos de currículo y de las áreas de contenido en inglés y en español, el distrito debería proveer un currículo de lenguaje de español para las maestras que puedan usar, que sea, verdad, eh, emparejado con el de, el currículo de inglés para que, de los mismos autores, para que así tenga una secuencia y...
Uh, and teachers need to have, uh, equivalent and quality materials in all content areas in Spanish. Uh, they can't be making all their own materials, or teachers who have been there a long time, they've already made the materials, they have a lot, new teachers have nothing, often, very little, I mean. At least they say so.
El distrito también debería proveer, um, materiales de igual calidad a las áreas de contenido en español. Las maestras no deberían ser responsables para, este, estar haciendo o creando material o usando material creado por ellos de la manera en que hacen ahora.
Um, and the review of instructional practices as well as self-report by the teacher was that they, the professional development, um, is needed for sheltering content. So how do we make content understandable? Uh, when the student is learning that content in, in other than their first language? And, uh, and ensure that they're learning language at the same time.
Los desarrollos profesionales para los maestros deberían, este, contener métodos para poder hacer contenido comprensible, de igual manera poder hacer acomodos razonables para el lenguaje oral y el lenguaje escrito.
And then, how do you scaffold, um, so that students are able to speak and write the language, and especially speak? Um, we saw students who had been in the dual language program since the early years and now in high school. Um, and, uh, this was in particular the English home language students who would not speak Spanish. They could, um, understand, listening, by listening they could, they had receptive knowledge. They could read very well and even could write pretty well, but they would not, would not speak. So, that starts from the very early years that the teachers have high expectations for production and provide scaffolds for the students to use, to orally use the Spanish language.
Una de las observaciones era que algunos estudiantes, a pesar de que hablaban y escribían muy bien el lenguaje, a, ahora de ese, de utilizar sus habilidades orales, no se sentían, verdad, con, como, con confianza, um, para desar, para estar compartiendo oralmente sus ideas. Esto ella sugiere que se, se tiene que desarrollar desde temprano a temprana edad en las elementales.
And what would, what we saw often was the English-speaking kids would, would call out, and then they, um, many of the Spanish-speaking students would just be silent.
En muchas ocasiones vio que los que estaban contestando eran aquellos que tenían inglés como primer lenguaje y aquellos que hablan español como primer lenguaje se quedaban callados.
So, uh, the teachers could also benefit from, um, uh, cooperative learning techniques and how to strategically use language partners as language models for each other since it is a two-way program.
Las maestras podrían, um, aprender a cómo hacer lenguaje cooperativo utilizando, este, parejas de lenguaje en la cual pueden usarse de modelo de lenguaje enfocal, lenguaje focal para cada uno.
Um, it would, it's also important for the teachers to, um, foster positive relationships among students from different language backgrounds, races, and socioeconomic classes.
Las maestras también, este, podrían tratar de crear un ambiente de relación y, y de amistad entre los estudiantes que son de diferentes, eh, lenguajes, razas y de, es clase económica.
And then, at the top of the list, um, if, you know, a new curriculum is adopted, um, that, that there's going to have to be professional development on the use of that curricula and also, um, the use of the new Illinois Spanish language arts standards.
Si se adopta un currículo nuevo para español, va a necesitar que hagan desarrollo profesional para los maestros para que aprendan a utilizar el currículo y a implementar el currículo, y también este currículo debe ser atado a los estándares de, de lenguaje de español, de artes en español de Illinois.
And then, the recommendation is to identify teachers who are doing outstanding work and find ways for them to serve as models for other teachers because there really are outstanding teachers in every one of the schools in the program.
También el distrito debería identificar maestros que están haciendo un trabajo estupendo y encontrar maneras en la cual ellos puedan servir como modelos para otros maestros, porque sí existen buenos maestros en cada programa dual.
Uh, as far as teacher recruitment, um, you know, and special, special, uh, set of skills that's needed to be an effective dual teacher. So, you know, USD should continue to seek opportunities for recruiting qualified educators and help dual language teachers get their certification and endorsement.
Es crucial para el distrito que continúe buscando oportunidades para reclutar educadores cualificados porque se requiere cierta cualificación para ser maestro de programa dual o para lograr que esos maestros logren un cert, una certificación, ah, en ser maestros de programa dual.
And, you know, the, um, thinking of how important leadership is, that, um, they're ensuring that all school leaders and central office staff whose offices are needed to make the DL programs a success are knowledgeable and well-informed about the DL program, its unique needs, and their supporting roles. Um, especially, uh, at the secondary, the leadership needs to take ownership of the program.
El programa dual en la secundaria van a estar, bueno, en toda, en todo el programa van a estar apoyo de la oficina central. En particular, los líderes de las escuelas y de la, del distrito central, eh, tienen que poder ser, um, bien informados acerca de las, de las características del programa dual y de los, las necesidades únicas que tiene este programa para poder apoyarlos correctamente.
Um, and, you know, there were gaps in the data, um, as we were talking about some of the issues. Um, so, you know, um, need to systematically plan for the collection of data, uh, showing student strengths but also their shortcomings. Need to be done in a timely way, to be shared with stakeholders, staff, families. Um, and, uh, for the purpose of improving, uh, accountability around serving the students and to, uh, support continuous improvement.
Con respecto a los, a la data, tiene que haber un plan sistemático para coleccionar estos datos, particularmente cuando se trata de, eh, el desempeño de los estudiantes, ya sea las, las, en las cosas que son buenos y las, y en las, en los aspectos que todavía tienen espacio para crecer. Eh, y educarlos en una manera de poder ver sus datos en una manera rápida para poder informar a todos aquellos que están envueltos, ya sean familias, ya sea trabajadores y otros que están envueltos en el programa, para poder mejorar y... y continuar el, el desarrollo del programa.
And, um, and of course families. Uh, families need to be informed of the instructional methods and the ways the curriculum and materials support bilingualism, bilingual literacy, high academic achievement, and sociocultural competence, which are the goals of dual language programs.
También deben, este, fortalecer la comunicación con las familias acerca del programa dual, de sus métodos pedagógicos y de la manera en que el currículo y los materiales apoyan el biligualismo, la literacy, la literacia y el, el alcance a material riguroso y altamente académico y para la competencia sociocultural.
And then hold, you know, family meetings, back-to-school nights, small informal meetings with principals or other instructional leaders, uh, who will hear parent concerns and inform parents of both language groups of, um, the, uh, components of effective dual language programs.
También deberían hacer, este, reuniones familiares, eh, de vuelta a la escuela, más pequeñas e informales, para poder conocer a los principales y a otros líderes, para poder conocer a los líderes de instrucción y currículo y para poder, este, escuchar a los, las preocupaciones de los padres y informar padres de, de los, de los lenguajes de ambos grupos y los componentes que son importantes para el programa dual.
And then you could set up parent workshops that engage parents from both language backgrounds in language learning activities, uh, that reflect the kind of instruction that their students are receiving.
Preparar también talleres en la cual los padres puedan compartir con padres de otros lenguajes o de otras, verdad, culturas en una manera cooperativa y puedan hacer actividades que también reflejen el mismo aprendizaje que sus estudiantes están, eh, experimentando en la escuela.
And one of the major, the one of the three goals, as we said, of dual language education is sociocultural competence, so, you know, address issues of inequity by making sociocultural competence and a strength-based approach to linguistic, cultural, and economic differences a focus for... a focus for teacher professional development and family engagement.
Una de las recomendaciones también es, eh, del aspecto de capacidad sociocultural. Es bien importante desarrollar ese, esa capacidad sociocultural entre los estudiantes y poder, eh, trabajar con aquellas inequidades que puedan, verdad, este, ser impedimento para el enfoque de la escuela y proveer también desarrollo profesional para las familias y para los maestros acerca de esto.
And have school assemblies and community activities that honor bilingualism and cultural diversity and get staff, parents, and students excited about being part of a community that's rich in cultural, social, and linguistic diversity.
Eh, enfocarse también en tener asambleas en la escuela en la cual incluyen la comunidad, las actividades de, de la comunidad que incluyan y on, y veneren el, el bilingualismo y la diversidad cultural que tiene la escuela y envuelven los, a los trabajadores, a los padres y a los estudiantes para que se emocionen de ser parte de esta comunidad que es tan rica en, as, en diversidad cultural, social, y lingüística.
For example, um, when I and my colleague were at LEO, we were excited because we heard there was going to be a bilingual assembly uh, for African-American Heritage Month. Um, and, um, when we observed it, um, because we thought there would be children performing from the dual program and the non-dual program. And as it turned out, there were no students from the dual program involved at all. Um, the bilingual aspect was one of the staff who was translating or the, uh, was translating some parts of the performance, presentation. And, um, that's just not what, that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about, uh, really, um, having that kind of, um, eh, recognition and honor and value of the cultural diversity within the program.
Un ejemplo que ella está dando de una mala implementación de una asamblea es que cuando ellas estaban aquí evaluando había una asamblea, eh, cultural. Ahm, y ellas pensaban que iba a haber, verdad, varias, varias personas de la comunidad de programa dual envueltas en, en este, en esta asamblea. Pero cuando vino a ver, este, solamente habían, verdad, eh, personas traduciendo y no había una, un sentido de comunidad, de pertenencia y de orgullo en, 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 en ese programa. Que eso no es lo que ella quiere o no, no espera ver de un programa dual. Quiere una asamblea que sea más multifacética, con más personas envueltas, que incluya toda la escuela y particularmente aquellos del programa dual.
And finally, um, strategic planning. So, um, I know that, um, this is gonna be followed by, um, you know, plans that are already in the works for improving the program. Um, and part of that needs to be a well-thought-out, multi-year plan for the sustenance and development of the dual language program and bringing in expertise and stakeholders in the process. Uh, engaging all concerned in continuous reflection uh, after the plan is, is devised. Um, evaluating after, af, after, eh, you know, uh, implementation every year. We can, it's, it's constant, it's constant, um, reflection and, and, uh, improvement. So, that is, oh, say it in Spanish.
Ahm, otro aspecto importante es no solamente hacer el, el plan de mul, de múltiples años pero también hay que reflexionar cada año y poder traer esos datos y traer a todo el mundo para que pueda ayudar a reflexionar y a proveer diferentes, verdad, reflexiones y evaluaciones acerca de cada año de implementación. Es, es una implementación continua y de reflexión continua a través de los años.
Okay, so that brings us to the end. I can't even see anybody. Is there anybody left in the room?
Yes, uh, board members, any questions?
This has been a long meeting. Oh, there are people there.
Hi, um, this is Sitlali, um, Sitlali Stanton. Uh, thank you for your presentation, uh, thank you for the patience. And, um, I want to know if this report is also gonna be in Spanish so the Spanish community can have access to. Uh, it's hard to understand it, so maybe in Spanish it's gonna be a little bit more easy to, um, understand it. So, are you guys providing this information in Spanish as well?
Who are you asking? Uh, that was not part of the contract to, to, uh, to translate that. That's, that's on USD to decide if they wanna do it. And they can pay us or they could, uh, they could find a, a translation service. It's absolutely a good idea. Sometimes, uh, an executive summary is, is translated. Um, I don't, that was not part of the contract. We do, we do what is asked of us.
So yes, we can, we have some translation service folks in the community, so we can do that.
Uh, board members, any other questions?
Yes, I have a quick one. Um, you, you did talk about the, um, positives about having a whole school program, but you also mentioned that there were some issues that in the strand would not appear in the whole school. Could you, um, list some of those issues that you were referring to? I don't think so.
The strand, it's a tale of two cities usually. And you've got, um, uh, what, I, I've seen programs that have been strands in existence for many years and they still don't get along. Uh, there is a sociocultural divide between the English-only program and the dual program. They don't understand each other. There's often animosity between one and the other that, oh, you're getting more services, you're getting more materials than we do. Uh, and then there's also just a, uh, the, the, um, imbalance in our greater society of the dominance of English and the prestige of English is, is not only outside but also inside the school. Um, and for students to, um, really have the, the motivation and the willingness uh, to, uh, stick with those languages and, uh, learn those languages in the upper elementary where you often see them turning away from wanting to use the minoritized language. You have a mu- much better chance of creating a microcosm in your building that shows value for, um, for the, that minoritized language and doesn't have to compete with another program that's, that's saying English, 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 English. English is the best, you know. You can counter that narrative in a, in a, in a whole school that you can't do in a strand.
So, my question is, um, you know, a lot of people will comment about how standardized tests have bias against native English, or, sorry, native Spanish speakers. Um, is there, such as the MAP testing. So, is there any test, standardized testing out there that you think is fair to the native, uh, Spanish speaker or the English learner? Uh, and along those lines is the ACCESS test for English proficiency, uh, also a biased test.
Uh, no, that time I heard nothing. Yeah, I can. A test in their own language. If they're being taught in, um, if they're being taught the content in Spanish, whether it's a, a Spanish speaker or an English speaker who's learning Spanish, if you're, if you are learning the content in Spanish, the test should be in Spanish. I mean, that's like the number one. And then, we don't make recommendations about commercial products. We talk, we talk to people about what they are looking for, what is the purpose of the test, uh, number one. And then from there, talk about what are going to be more valid and reliable tests for language learners. But we don't recommend, like, we don't name products. Uh, the, uh, s- so you, you're saying one-way? Well, you're a two-way program, right? Because you, you have, uh, about equal numbers of English he- home language students coming with. You might, you might become a one-way program? Okay, um, so that's one thing, you know, that's the population. And then there's the amount of language, which is the language allocation. So I wasn't sure, because that's two, those two different features of your, of your model, right? Um, and, um, the advantage to, there's, the advantage to having an eighty-twenty over fifty-fifty is, is for each, for the English home language kids and for the Spanish home language kids. For the English home language kids, you, um, you offset the pro, the, the prominence of English in their lives outside of school and give them the advantage of a, kind of an immersive experience in their early years, which is, you know, found to be very beneficial for them to be growing that language, especially in those early years when they're soaking it up, right? Um, and for Spanish-speaking students who only speak Spanish when they come in, for them, learning to read and write in Spanish is very, very, very helpful. You know, it's very hard, uh, for that, for that to, to be learning, uh, uh, literacy in a language they don't understand at all. And, and part of it comes down to what parents do at home. But in a community like yours, there's no problem, uh, with the English home language kids coming in and, and doing, uh, a good part of their, um, eh, education in the language other than English because they come from educated, uh, home backgrounds for the most part and, um, and they learn a lot at home about English. Um, so they do very well. Um, a lot of research on that, on how well the English home language kids do. And then the Spanish kids are advantaged by being able to learn to read and write in their own language, maintain their language. There's a lot of non-academic benefits too to having your language, which is your culture, endorsed and valued in school rather than the teachers ask you to shut that off. What message does that send to kids? Uh, but what I was saying is that the kids could benefit from a little bit more oral language development, so move from ninety-ten to nine, to eighty-twenty. The, the, uh, the, uh, English learners, the, uh, multilingual learners, I mean. And definitely that they, you eventually have equal amounts though. You know, you end up being fifty-fifty, right? Um, by third grade usually, can be second to fourth grade. Um, and then you must, you have to have English Language Arts and Spanish Language Arts for the duration. You don't learn language through a content area. Like, you know, we're only gonna have, uh, it, you know, Spanish, uh, science or social studies, you know. Some programs make the mistake of doing that and they don't focus enough on, on the development of the language as you do in a language arts class.
I have a follow-up, uh, for that question. So you were mentioning about the two different models. Do you have any, um, model or place where we can point us, where you can point us to see that work is working in there? And the second question is, um, I didn't notice any recommendations of where you took your recommendations in order to get that, uh, twenty, what is, twenty-eighty?
I don't, I can't understand any. Um, yes, there, there are a lot of programs around the country. Um, there are many that have moved from ninety-ten to eighty-twenty. Um, and that's based on observations of students and also research that has shown that, uh, especially when you have students who, um, are the Spanish home background students that are coming in and really are coming in as new to English and live in barrios, that live in communities where there really isn't a lot of English spoken. Um, so it seems only fair to them, they're, that they're in school, that they have some time that's dedicated to the development of oral academic English at the same time that they are learning literacy in their first language. So, um, it's in those kinds of, um, where you have that kind of a demographic that you're seeing the push to. Specials isn't enough. Ninety-ten means that ten percent is just art, music, PE. You're not getting focused pre-literacy, um, uh, oral language development uh, as you do in a dedicated, uh, English Language Arts class. That isn't even that much, you know, in, uh, uh, every ten percent. Um, and yes, so we're working, uh, with a number of, of schools. Um, one of the schools we've been working with for the last five years, School Systems, for the last five years, what they were doing, they, they had all transitional programs except for a couple of dual language uh, in their elementary. And they've decided to move transitional to, uh, dual language. Um, and they have decided to do, um, eighty-twenty. Because of their population, uh, many of whom live in, uh, isolated communities where the children are not speaking English outside of school and they need that development in school.
John, I've got a couple of questions. I'll try and come short. Uh, the, the first one is the recommendation for single building. Does that come strictly from personal experience? Or does it also come from conversations and focus groups or, uh, from research? The first, the recommendation for a single building.
Now, it, that is, ask any, yeah, ask any, I, I, I do not believe there's, uh, anybody who did a study on it, but ask any expert in dual language and they will tell you the same thing. That whole school models work better than strand programs. Because they, for all the reasons that were on that, those slides that I gave you, that, that, that they can be supported, that they can support each other, that they don't have to fend off the power of English in their buildings. Uh, that they don't have to have any kind of strife between, uh, you know, one culture trying to dominate the other. Um, be, being able to, you know, celebrate, truly celebrate the two languages. You walk in and everywhere you see, all over the walls you see, this is a, a program in which these, our students are not learning in just one language. They are learning two languages and it's everywhere. Um, the kids don't hear, you know, another program that's dominated by English as our society is, just, they, uh, yeah. Ask any dual language expert and they will say, if you ask them, should we have a strand program or should we have a whole school? They will tell you hands down, a whole school.
All right, the, the, the last question is we have, uh, students whose native language is not Spanish, but some, you know, South American native language. Uh, what's the best practice for serving these students?
Yeah, Guatemalan, I mean, like Central American. A lot of Guatemalans now speak indigenous languages, yes. Um, they, 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 um, now, you know, the, the verdict is, I think you would need to learn more about them because there are many, many students who, yes, if they come from the rural, very rural areas, um, they may still be speaking more of, uh, an indigenous language. If they come from urban areas, the lingua franca in, uh, in a place, in a country like Guatemala is Spanish. So, uh, especially, uh, the families in that case will know more Spanish, but maybe they're using more of the indigenous language at home. Um, and, uh, those students from a very young age, then they're absorbed into your, uh, into your dual language program and are learning Spanish and English. And it's very possible for them to do. And some of them have a fair amount of Spanish as well as their indigenous language. It's something to find out. If you're finding that a student doesn't have success, I know you're, you don't only have dual language in USD, right? You have ESL programs and maybe the child is better served in, in, um, in a, um, in an ESL program, but there's no reason why they can't thrive in a dual language program, starting early especially. All kids are learning language, even your first language at that time, in the early grades.
Any other questions, board? All right, I, I thank you for the presentation. Pass that along, thanks, please.
Okay, John.
No, no, just, just maybe a little more warm thank you, but it's, it's okay. And, and I want to, uh, send out, uh, thanks to our translators tonight. That was a lot of work for you guys, really thank. Yeah, so, uh, with, with the board's approval, I'd like to quickly do 11 dot five, because we have people here waiting for, uh, the administrative personnel items, so, uh, yeah, so Angie, can you describe 11 dot five?
I didn't know if you were voting to approve to move them up, so. Hi. So Julia, if you'll come to the table. She might be a little hungry, she's been here since 6:30, so. All right, on Wednesday, April 26th, a team of teachers, union representatives and building administrators held interviews for the open assistant principal position at Urbana Middle School. There were three candidates who were interviewed for the position. Ms. Julia Lowry was selected as the most outstanding candidate to serve as the next assistant principal at Urbana Middle School. Ms. Lowry has been working at Urbana Middle School for the past 12 years. She was an English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher for five years and an instructional coach for the past seven years. Ms. Lowry also serves as ELA curriculum coordinator, RTI co-coordinator, school improvement team member and the UEA vice president. Originally from Joliet, Illinois, Julia came down to attend the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign as an undergraduate student in 2007. She loved her placements at Urbana Middle School so much that she never left. Julia is a proud Urbana resident, living with her husband Ryan and two children. It is a true catch for the Urbana School District, um, to be able to have Ms. Julia Lowry accept this position pending formal board approval. So that's the first one. And, Ms. Andrea Jackson. You can stay up there, Julia. Hi. On Tuesday, April 25th, a team of teachers, support staff, parents and union representatives held interviews for the open principal position at Thomas Paine Elementary School. There were three candidates who were interviewed for the position. Two candidates advanced to a level two interview on Tuesday, May 2nd with Superintendent Ivory Tatum and the executive team. Ms. Andrea Jackson was selected as the most outstanding candidate to serve as the next principal at Thomas Paine Elementary School. Ms. Andrea Jackson began her career as an educator in 2013 as a second grade teacher at Thomas Paine Elementary. After four successful years of teaching second grade, Ms. Jackson was promoted to the family engagement and curriculum coordinator. As a coordinator, she served as the district's liaison for families of incoming kindergarten students, provided literacy instruction to kindergarten students and was awarded an unsung hero award. Ms. Jackson currently serves as assistant principal at Thomas Paine Elementary and has held this position since the fall of 2021. Ms. Jackson holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and international resource in consumer economics in 2006, a teaching license in elementary education from McMillican University in 2013 and a master's degree in education administration from the University of Illinois in 2020. It is also an honor, um, for Ms. Jackson to accept the principal role at Thomas Paine pending formal board approval.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve these administrative personnel items?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Member Staton, whoops. Member Staton. Member Vaxley.
Yes.
Member Hassanaka.
Yes.
Secretary Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum.
Yeah.
President Palowski.
Yes, congratulations. And Julie, you're helping out with negotiation three years, are you alive?
Ladies, if you'll turn on your mics, yes, let's clap. Turn on their mics. We truly are honored that you are choosing to take these administrative roles for, in our buildings. So, thank you so much for accepting the next challenge. And if you have anything you want to say to the board, you've waited a long time. So, we would love to hear anything you might want to share, or even just good night.
I'll ju, I'll just say that after 12 years of being a certified educator in Urbana and having everyone here grow me as an educator, I'm very excited to take on this new challenge and continue to work with our staff and students who I, I really do love.
Um, I'm sorry, my voice is kind of going out. It's really late. Um, but I, I do want to echo, I really appreciate the support of the board, um, the administrative team, all the teachers and staff and families at Thomas Paine that have just supported me throughout this time. As assistant principal, I look forward to continuing the great work at Thomas Paine.
And the great family legacy of leadership in Urbana. Yes, thank you, Mr. Jeffries attending too. All right, thank you.
So back to, uh, 10.3, the Spanish dual language implementation plans for CAL guidance.
While Joe is pulling this up, I just want to take another moment to think again. The interpreters who for two hours straight translated technical language that they had never seen, heard or knew of. And any of you that speak another language really, um, understand how hard that is. Um, I told Lucea if it was up to me, all of them would get an extra two weeks off. Um, that's not up to me, but I just really want to recognize all of that hard work because, because that's really hard.
I would also like to just mention that we were, if it were earlier in the evening, we probably want to go into more detail on each slide, but we're gonna go more quickly through the slides and just save more time for conversation and Q and A. Um, a lot of, obviously you have these slides at your fingertips, so hopefully you've, you've already looked through them. The purpose of our presentation tonight, following the presentation from the Center for Applied Linguistics, is to just talk through a couple key points regarding comparing our internal evaluation that our dual language committee that was formed last school year did and how it compares very closely to the external evaluation from the Center for Applied Linguistics. So to be very like clear and to the point, it, what Cal has presented to us is what we've been saying for many years, many months. Uh, it matches. Um, what they are able to provide, were able to provide for us was more of the quantitative data in a, in a much better way than we could have internally. Um, and I know there's been comments about wishing to have seen this data earlier or sooner internally, uh, but this was the purpose of the external evaluation is for experts to do that in a more, um, tangible way and in a way that would be more believable because we oftentimes are criticized and not believed for the data we present. So, that was one of the big pers, uh, reasons for the external evaluation. As well as, Lupe are gonna go back and forth on this, uh, but I do want to also emphasize that as program directors, we are fully open to programmatic changes, um, whether that is language allocation plan, whether that's program delivery one-way, two-way, whether that's whole school model or continuing strand models. We are wide open and, uh, and it's all on the table. Um, I just want to emphasize, there were several public comments earlier about, why didn't we put the recommendation or a, a comment about moving to 80/20? Because that was a recommendation from Cal. Uh, or why do we not have anything about whole school or strand model? We're not going to be presenting that tonight because it needs to be, we've been saying what we think we should be doing for two years. So tonight really is to highlight what we've been saying for two years and how it aligns with what Cal is saying. Um, and so, we also want to emphasize that we want to funnel all of this work through our newly refurbished B-PAC, um, the Familia Familia that Ricardo spoke about earlier, um, so that program administrators aren't the ones pushing for any change. We want it to be a collective push for whatever the community feels is best uh, because the community clearly wants more transparency and more opportunities to lead the work and not us. So, we want to work in tandem with everyone. And that was my little soapbox, so. Oh, yes, I forgot about that. So, esta presentación esta noche vamos a ser más, en más detalles, pero ya son las diez y media casi las once. Entonces vamos a presentar nada más un resumen más que nada, pero quisiera explicar que para empezar, en los últimos dos años hemos hecho la evaluación internal con los maestros y los comités que hemos tenido de lengua dual y los resultados de la evaluación internal más o menos es igual a la evaluación external de, de Center for Applied Linguistics. Entonces queremos, um, decir que lo que hemos visto, lo que hemos dicho por varios años, varios meses, es más o menos igual de lo que está haciendo la, el centro de Applied Linguistics. También queremos aclarar que queremos trabajar más con el, el nuevo B-PAC, los miembros y oficiales del B-PAC de, con Ricardo y Felipe, acerca de lo que vamos a hacer en el futuro con el strategic plan, um, de, para mejorar los programas. No queremos ser los que están tomando las decisiones o haciendo las recomendaciones. Eso es lo que hemos hecho en los últimos dos años. Ahora es tiempo, hora, para la comunidad y las familias decidir lo que queremos hacer. Estamos abiertos a cualquier cambio a los programas que nosotros como comunidad queremos tomar. Entonces vamos a presentar un poco de la comparación entre lo que hicimos el año pasado y lo que hizo el centro con la evaluación externa.
Okay, so as Dr. Wimout said, we are just gonna very briefly go through, um, each individual strand and just highlight, um, the similarities between what Cal had presented, um, and what we had found.
Sure.
Okay.
So me, okay.
No, I'm saying, do you want to translate?
English, Spanish, okay.
Yes, and we'll just speak Spanish.
Yes, so I've already.
Say what I just said in Spanish.
You need to say it in Spanish.
Ay, Dios mio, that's what I will say. Yes, sorry. Um, so, uh, desculpe. Entonces esta evaluación se hizo, se hace en siete partes. Entonces no vamos a leer todo lo que está en la pantalla, solo vamos a dar un resumen de cómo, de las, semenaz, semenaz? Sí, semenaz, sí. Gracias, semejanzas, gracias. Uh, entre las dos, lo que decidimos cuando hicimos la evaluación con el equipo del distrito y cómo se parece igual con lo de la compañía de Cal. So, oh, yeah, this isn't changing, sorry.
So, what we did here was, we originally, when we evaluated strand one, we came out as partially implemented. You'll see, we evaluated ourselves partially implemented for every strand, which meant that we were scoring ourselves very low in these areas. Um, the Center for Applied Linguistics also basically scored us low in all of these areas and was making recommendations similar to the recommendations that we have made. There's some differences, of course, and not everything that was put in our evaluation and the, the external evaluation is listed on this PowerPoint, uh, but these are just some of the bigger highlights. Entonces, strand one, lo que tenemos aquí es en el lado izquierda, es lo que hicimos el año pasado del, con el comité. Y en el lado derecho, derecha, es lo que dice el centro de Applied Linguistics. Y estamos comparando lo que, la comparación y las semejanzas entre las dos evaluaciones.
So then looking at, in this specific area, and what you will see will that some of the current progress and preliminary plans for next steps will be similar in multiple strands because these strands don't really function in isolation. Entonces vas a ver que las recomendaciones que damos el distrito de cómo seguir con las recomendaciones de Cal van a ser parecidas en muchas de las diferentes partes porque estas partes no, no trabajan únicamente en su área. Hay algunas áreas que, que se mezclan. Um, so with this one, the first one that, um, you know, that we had talked about was developing a dual language parent handbook. So we have, um, a district parent handbook and we have school parent handbooks that are distributed, but we do not necessarily have a parent handbook with all of our policies and protocols specifically for parents. Um, the other one is really thinking about planning regularly scheduled, um, parent folk, family meetings that are specifically focused on strategies for how a dual language parent can support their child at home. Um, so again, buildings will do math nights, they'll do literacy nights, but we aren't necessarily doing biliteracy nights or how to support your mult, your multilingual child with math. necessarily doing bilingual nights, or how to support your multilingual child with math, as well as looking at ongoing collaboration and PD for our school and our district as well. Some of these things are already in place, really continuing that. Dr. Weemelt and I meet with building admin regularly, as well as doing monthly meetings with our departments, and then adding some district dual-language leadership meetings to make sure that all of the admin in the district, whether that be building or central office, are getting the same information around the program.
So, para strand one, estamos hablando de organizar y desarrollar un handbook, una guía para padres acerca del programa de lengua dual, establecer más juntas regularmente con el B-PAC y con, más que nada, con las familias a nivel dual del distrito, y proveer o tener más colaboración y desarrollo profesional entre las escuelas y administración para mejorar lo que todos entienden acerca de los programas. We're going to speed this up. Strand two, curriculum. The next slide shows what we did last year, and the next slide is our self-evaluation, wanting to strengthen our curriculum. We were partially implemented, needing to improve Spanish language arts and English language arts and the WEDA standards, improve the instruction for the variation of languages. They said a lot of the same things, so they wanted to see stronger curriculum development, stronger foundational skills taught in Spanish, and a need for a specialized curriculum and not just developing things on our own. Entonces, lo que hicimos acerca del curriculum, dijimos el año pasado que necesitamos mejorar las estándares y todo lo que estamos haciendo entre español e inglés, igual que lo que está diciendo Cal, que necesitamos algo más completo y más fuerte acerca de la enseñanza de los dos idiomas desde pre-kinders hasta doceavo, y no necesariamente tener nada más materiales creados por maestros, pero tener más materiales como textos, etc., de curriculum. So strand three, if you jump to the one that has the side-by-side.
So again, with instruction, a lot of similar findings, so really thinking about how our lessons really need to be developed in a way that are supporting all of our language learners across linguistic level, but also across language, really giving teachers that time to really plan specifically with language objectives and content objectives as a part of their lesson, and that's what's driving the conversation with the students, as well as really making sure that that sociocultural competence piece is incorporated into the classroom during instruction as much as possible, and really making sure that the content is being culturally appropriate as well. Sure, yep. So, asegurando que los maestros, las maestras están preparando sus lecciones usando, con el pensamiento que van a estar enseñando a niños de varias idiomas, pero igual entre las idiomas de diferentes niveles, y asegurando que la materia que están usando igual es apropiada del contenido, pero también que tiene influencia de las diferentes culturas de donde vienen los niños, igual que están integrando igual el lenguaje de los diferentes niños y estudiantes igual.
Okay, strand, so the next, the slide before that, and for each strand, we talked about next steps. These are not exhaustive next steps, so as we get to the later in the presentation where we talk about creating a strategic planning group for our programs, they are going to develop the next steps. These are just suggestions and ideas for our next steps. So, the next slide, strand four, yep, assessment and accountability. Go to, yep, perfect. So, we acknowledged last year in our self-evaluation that our data systems needed to be updated, needed to be strengthened, needed to be more uniformed, and have a better data system of assessment and accountability, and one that is more communicative to families and the broader community and to the board. They are also saying the same thing. We need to see stronger accountability system for assessing bilingual development and reporting that to stakeholders, and develop the capacity to analyze that data to make informed decisions. So we've been saying that as a great need, because we had gaps in our data, and that's definitely something that needs to be improved. Hablando de las evaluaciones y contabilidad acerca de el desarrollo de los dos idiomas de los estudiantes, la manera que estamos compartiendo la información de los exámenes, etc., lo que hicimos el año pasado y lo que está diciendo Cal, es igual que necesitamos mejorar el sistema de comunicarse, la información, the data, so. Strand five.
So this is the area for staff quality and professional development. So, really thinking about which PD we're offering and how it is inclusive of the ideas that the teachers have, what is it that they feel like they want to improve upon? So in this area, you know, really thinking about how we can get that information from teachers and how we can then present it back to them as well. Entonces, en este área del desarrollo profesional, pensando bien qué es lo que necesitan los maestros y las maestras para mejorar su práctica, pensando, preguntándoles, dándoles posiblemente una encuesta sobre cuáles áreas o quién desean tener de presentar para enseñarles nuevas estrategias de enseñanza, usando los coaches, igual dándoles la oportunidad para visitar a los otros clases también.
Strand six, family and community. We talked a lot about in our internal evaluation, the inconsistency of support for families across different buildings. This is what happens when you have strand models that can be inconsistent. We had a lack of a formal advisory structure. Our B-PAC was not operational as it needs to be, or has needed to be, and there was not consistency in how we were publishing documents and family engagement. And lots of good things happening in pockets, but not a nice, consistent plan for family engagement, community engagement, pre-K through 12. Cal provided similar feedback, needing to improve the opportunities for more family engagement, more cultural events, more opportunities for families to be engaged. So this big next step is the strengthening and working in collaboration with our B-PAC and Ricardo and Felipe, our co-chairs, as well as the broader community. So, hablando de la familia y la comunidad, este mejorar la colaboración con familias, con el comité del B-PAC, y la comunicación, proveer más oportunidades de eventos culturales, más juntas para las familias para aprender, hacer más acerca del programa, el bilingüismo, etc., es algo muy importante que necesitamos mejorar. And strand seven.
And strand seven was about support and resources. So a big part of this was looking at that, at developing a strategic plan, five years at a minimum, as well as looking at the expertise that everyone involved in any committees, any evaluation, any discussion, really using their knowledge base to really help us engage in those discussions and making sure that we're making improvements, as well as making sure, as I had mentioned, that all administration at the district level, at the building level, are really knowledgeable about what is appropriate for dual language when we're making big district-level decisions. So, is this, why am I blinking? Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. En esta área estamos hablando de el apoyo y los recursos para el programa, y un gran parte de esta área era en tener un plan, posiblemente de cinco años o más, para pensar bien cómo es que podemos mejorar el programa de dual, igual usando la información o lo que se sabe entre todo el grupo, para pensar bien cómo podemos seguir evaluando lo que estamos haciendo cada año y cómo seguir mejorando. Igual asegurar que todos los administradores que trabajan en la oficina central, igual que en los edificios, tienen, pueden entender bien qué es lo necesario para mantener el programa bilingüe de lengua dual, y asegurando que todas las decisiones que hacemos en el distrito están con el pensamiento de qué es mejor para los niños en nuestro programa.
One thing I'd emphasize on strand seven that I really appreciate about the feedback from Cal's external evaluation is not just the strategic plan development, but the ensuring that the expertise and stakeholders in the process are engaging in a continuous and annual evaluation each year of implementation. I think we've learned that we need to do something like this annually, so that's all of the information is clear, and not necessarily an external evaluation annually, that's not what I mean, and a process that engages our community, our board, our families, our B-PAC, our staff, to, everyone understands where things are at the end of each year, looking at data, looking at feedback, etc. And also ensuring that all central office and district-wide building administrators and staff are knowledgeable and well-informed. One of the things that Dr. Medina, who also works in tandem with the Center for Applied Linguistics, is, there's no, there should not be any such thing, a dual-language program, or a district with a dual-language program, you're a dual-language district. If you have one dual-language student or one dual-language program in your district, you should be calling yourselves a dual-language district. That's where we need to get, to where we're all taking ownership of everything that we do, and not just dual-language, but also other programming as well. That's strand seven. So the dual-language planning committee is very important as our next step, to develop how we implement these recommendations and next steps. And I would ask that that dual-language committee not be formed by us, that that be formed in collaboration with the board. The last slide of summary is the findings from the Cal evaluation affirmed our internal findings. This feedback needs to be a driver in our next steps and our strategic plan, and the quantitative and qualitative analysis provided by Cal reflect that we need to improve. I also want to emphasize, we also want to emphasize that it's also important to note, and you'll be receiving a board presentation soon about like school improvement plans for every school, our dual-language students, contrary to what some public comment folks were saying, is not drastically different than, our dual-language outcomes are not drastically different than our district outcomes. In fact, they're very similar, and in some areas, dual-language is doing better than the district-wide outside of dual-language. So I just want to emphasize that this was, in some ways, like set up on a T to attack dual-language as not being effective, and we just really need to be mindful of, this is a broader systems issue, not just a dual-language issue in terms of student outcomes, and it's not just an Urbana School District issue. If you look and compare schools with similar populations, everyone's data looks like what it looks like in this presentation, frankly. So, just wanted to emphasize that. Hablando de la última página aquí en resumen, acerca de los resultados de la evaluación de Cal afirman o son más o menos iguales de lo que hicimos con la evaluación el año pasado. La información de la evaluación necesita ser lo que está manejando el programa, los cambios con el programa, y trabajando en colaboración con la comunidad, con familias, con maestros, con la junta educativa, etc. Y los resultados de los estudiantes, los resultados académicos reflejan más o menos los resultados del distrito y del estado y de los Estados Unidos. Los resultados no son muy o más demasiado peores de los demás escuelas en el distrito o tal vez en el estado. So it's muy importante que los próximos pasos sean en colaboración, colaboración, perdón. I think that's it. That's our last slide. Did you have anything else? We did not expect it to be 11:10 when we got to this part, so we're open to conversations and questions. Go ahead, Stulley.
Hi, thank you so much. You guys did amazing, spirited up and giving information direct, which is what we need right now because it's late. Gracias por darnos la información de una forma directa y rápida. Es tarde, entonces voy a ser muy rápida. Voy a preguntar las preguntas en español. ¿Ustedes están diciendo que se necesita otro comité? ¿El comité es diferente al B-PAC? You guys are on the last slide saying that they created a committed, a dual-language committed, which is going to be different than the B-PAC?
I don't think it has to be different than the B-PAC. I think the B-PAC could drive that planning group and the group that's formed. I think it's going to have to be bigger than just the B-PAC, because right now the B-PAC's a very small number of people, but they could be the drivers of the next steps.
Mi siguiente pregunta es cómo ustedes van a ayudar a que ese grupo crezca. How you guys going to support the B-PAC to grow?
I don't know if you have a thought?
I mean, we definitely need to continue to work with our families, our liaisons, getting advertising out there, looking at how do we bring B-PAC to the communities? Because, you know, transportation's always a really issue, you know? How do we look at location for those meetings? Having childcare is always a plus, which we've been able to do this year. So really talking with the B-PAC about, you know, really getting their ideas. As parents, you know, what would really get you to engage and come, and being reflective in that sense? Because I mean, we can have ideas, but, you know, ultimately, parents know best what will work for them.
All right. And I have another two. You mentioned about providing manuals for the parents, how you're going to target the low-literacy parents that we have in the community that need more support.
I was just going to say, one thing we've talked about doing was, in addition to a manual that you read, creating videos that could go with them, that parents could watch, either like in some way, like on Google Drive or a disc that they can take, or I don't even know, USB drive, I don't even know if they make those anymore, but something that parents can take with them and watch at home, or something on their phone.
Maybe some Facebook videos?
Facebook videos, for sure.
That's what I was going to say. I know Lucia does that a lot with the Latino families of USC page, and that's, they're viewed quite often, so that's definitely an option.
And my last, my last question is, how do you think all this new implementation is going to support the dual-language program? Either it goes in one building or two straits? How are they going to support all these things to those students?
I think I need to pass on answering that question right now. Because my emotions are too high to answer that in a respectful, professional way.
All right, gracias.
Another.
What I will add, Stulley, is that I did go, I know Joe and I both went over the results with our teams yesterday, and we started that conversation with our teams about how to start implementing some of this, and I think that's the first step of once, first all of us getting, becoming aware of what our needs are, and then collectively coming up with plans on how to implement any changes.
All right, and board members, any other questions? Go ahead, Robbie.
So, one thing I think I will try to emphasize is, you know, for this strategic planning or dual-language planning committee, the next steps portion, I think the first thing that should be done in that group is to create and define the goals of the dual-language program, because I don't know if they're specifically defined, they're not at least in the board policy manual. So, 6160 is the policy on English learning, and that basically outlines what's done in the ESL program. So, to get kind of back to my question to the Cal person, you know, is the goal of the dual-language program to make multilingual proficient people in both English and Spanish, or is it to get them to, the English learners, to be proficient in English so they can continue on in the, like, English-based society? So, that's got to be defined. And then another part of that is not just, you know, the academics, but was brought up is the, we call it like the not intangibles, but you know, if you have somebody that just came from a detention center, you're not expecting them to, you know, just sit down and write a persuasive essay in English, you know? You're just expecting them not to be scared and hopefully be consoled and not cry or whatever, you know? So, you know, so part of that needs to be part of the, like, the goals of the dual-language program and written out and spelled out in the policy manual. So, you know, so it could be, you know, that, I like Joe, how you use my phrase, that everything's on the table, programmatic redesign potentially. It may be that you want a smaller, real tiny school that is the pure immersion comfort place, and then expand ESL elsewhere, or, you know, there's potentially a lot of different options that might be the solution, but you need to define what the goals are, you know? So, then the next thing is that comment about the preface of this presentation about, you know, you wanted an outside program or evaluation to be done, because that way we couldn't criticize, you know, what is the data that is presented. So, you know, I have been, I guess, around the DL program as a parent for eight years. So, I, you know, I have been, I guess, around the DL program as a parent for eight years, you know, and on the board now for two, and asking for data on whether the program's actually working. And so, last year in May and June, the only response I got from the building principals at Lille and Dr. Williams is that our fifth graders are ready for sixth grade, you know, and that is not really data, you know? So, this, I think, is the first in ten years that there has been legit data presented. And so, it is good to keep doing that on an annual basis, to keep looking at the program and seeing what you can do better. I think that is part of the reason why teachers in the DL program are, for lack of better words, burning out and doing other things. You know, as an example, we're going to later on approve my son's fourth-grade teacher, who's taught for four or five years, to become a building-based substitute, you know? And then my daughter in eighth grade, her fifth-grade DL teacher is a reading interventionalist, you know? So people are finding other jobs where they don't have to translate materials and do all this other stuff. So, this administrative support, which should come from this board, for dedicated curriculum, is very important. So, we got to do that. The curriculum piece is, I think, what's really going to drive the improvement in education, hopefully. But, my caution is, when you look at the board attendance numbers by the schools, the French DL program has kids in fifth grade. So clearly, that's been going on for six years now. And I heard the words "French" once, it was said once in the entire thing tonight. So, let us not wait four more years and then evaluate the French DL program, but we should be doing that with French as well.
Robbie, can I say something?
Sure.
You mentioned about having a little school for the population we have. As you noticed, we have two hundred and nine students in the dual-lingual program in Lille, and we have a hundred and eighty-four students. A little of the school is not enough for the dual-lingual program. We need, we need a bigger program, and we need to establish good methods to find that program to grow, not just to minimize. Because the program, as I understand, is not to create bilingual people, is to give support to the people we have in the community. I just want to point that out.
Okay. Then, the last thing I had was, we just decided to move towards this illustrative math curriculum program, and they have like a DL module or something. I mean, what is your take on that as far as being solid for, you know, English learners to start off in kindergarten, I guess?
So, Kim, I'm not on the math committee, I'm going to defer to you as far as what's been decided with that.
Yeah, we had dual-language teachers that have piloted it, piloted it, and then also, we need to continue to support. So there's going to be professional development provided all different times. We've tried to look at it, accommodating schedules during the school day, after the school day, throughout the summer, particular ones for dual-language as well, so, and also, yeah, resources, that was also considered within the math programs that were piloted, and so, all those pieces are part of it. Hope that answers your question.
Anyone else? Real quickly, I want to thank you, Joe. Your last statement kind of answered my question, one of them is, is the relative performance, you know, broadly of our students compared to DL programs? I'm really interested to see how that compares. I think I, just from, you know, what I've heard around the district, I think your assessment is correct. We're struggling in a lot of places, not just DL, and we've got a lot of work to do here as a district to bring everybody up. I also want to thank you for, you and, and your whole staff in that, I know that undergoing one of these assessments is a lot of work, outside of your, your data job of educating our kids. I want to express our appreciation for collecting this data and bringing it to us. And lastly, I think your, your plans to go forward is, is what we need, there's going to be no magic bullet that, that addresses the concerns here, there's going to be no quick fix. We need to set up a system of assist, where we have continual improvement, where we're constantly assessing, and involving everybody in looking at the data and trying to find ways to find improvements. So, look forward to the next steps and committing to the work, work ahead.
And just to add what, to what you've said, Paul, I mean, this is just the second year that we have the map assessment that is K through twelve. And so that is, we talked about, one of the questions was about a non-biased assessment, and so that is available in English and Spanish, which is recommended for our students. And when we originally, we're learning more and more about how to break that data apart, and so that we can drill down to exactly what we want to find out about percentiles, and then also looking at our student groups, and we can do that also, break, break that down by our programs as well. So, as we continue to learn more, we're able to find the information that we need, and then the more years that we have that trend data, that's going to help us too. That's why it's important that we have this at each level. Just wanted to add that.
So before Joe and Lupe leave, and I know it's late, we have been talking about this, the model that we did tonight in terms of having the, and while our translators are still here, you know, getting their opinion as well. So I know it was very long, it's something we've been saying we wanted to do. The report was not in Spanish, and so we did feel it was really important that we provided the CAL presentation as a actual translation. I know Sidlali requested that as well, and it's something that we, as a team, felt like we needed to try, because we've talked about doing it for a long time. But now that we have done this, we see it is a really time, time-consuming process. So I know Lupe had another idea, so before we leave, now that we, this is fresh, did you want to maybe share the idea?
Dr. Ivy Tatum and the cabinet team that works with me knows I like to just throw ideas out on the table, and they might be bad ideas, so feel free to tell me if it's a bad idea. But, in reflecting, as former teacher, you do a lesson, you reflect, and then think about how to do it better the next time. My recommendation was for anybody that's present, so for new board members, you may not be aware, but our district actually owns some very nice translation devices that are similar to what is used like at the UN, where one person is listening and translating on the spot into headsets for people that are participants. We do need some more training with that, they were bought during COVID, and we haven't had a lot of parent events, but that would be my suggestions for people that are in the audience, so that way it's not delaying your meeting, and someone is just listening to it, but in their own language. And then Lucia and other people from the district have, know how to dub over video files in other languages. Lucia, I know, has done that, but I'm sure we can train other people to do that too. So maybe the board meeting video is then dubbed in Spanish or French, and that is posted on the district YouTube page later. So that way, as Dr. Hasnaka mentioned, it could still be accessible to somebody later, maybe, but it wouldn't necessarily be live for somebody at home. These are just suggestions.
There is another option I was looking at as we were kind of going through, it wasn't possible to turn on for tonight, but there's a live closed captioning in multiple languages in YouTube, and I think we're at the threshold where we can start turning that on for future meetings as well.
I was, I actually tracking the YouTube to see. Sorry, I tracking the YouTube to see was alive, you know, like real life, had the late interpretation was looking, and I noticed they don't have the CC on. Also, when we have Zoom meetings, or Zoom person, and Zoom provides an interpretation, so the person who's in Zoom also is available to listen in another language, or to have at least a translation, writing translation. So it's another tool we can have. I understand the delay of the, of the, all the translation. I also honor all those translators, I know there are no professional translators. I took a course, I am a professional translator, it would take me, took me more than eighty dot, eighty-eight hours, and it's a hard job to do it. It's also hard when you don't have the material. When I request, I interpreted, I was expecting a professional one who will start, and it will end the whole meeting, even so, it takes time. I think the people who don't come here is because they get intimidated by, they don't listen, they don't understand. I am intimidated to talk, and sometimes it's hard for me to listen, and I get a little confused. So I can imagine a person who is just starting to learn Spanish or English. I know some, some parents on other communities can see it by Facebook, can see it by YouTube, so we just have to be very conscious and sensitive to those people who cannot be here just because of the language barrier. And if we say that we are a bilingual program, we should offer that bilingual.
Yeah. It's already on for subsequent meetings, and we don't usually have people on Zoom, so I apologize also for some of the problems with the audio going back through the system.
That's technology.
But yeah, like we got to the threshold, so we can do, turn that on for future meetings.
So, is the board willing to try, maybe using the translation for the people that are here in person, using our system that we have, maybe?
We could try it, I think it would take some training and some commitment from our staff that are willing to do it, because I mean, we don't yet have people that have done the professional translation course, but we have some great internal people that I think could still do a really great job, if they're willing.
Thank you.
Any last questions? All right, thank you very much. Before we move on to our action items, I'd like to recognize our camera operator tonight, Anna Seaman, who's staying here late and hopefully getting paid for it by the hour. Our consent agenda tonight consists of the minutes from the April eighteenth business meeting, the April twenty-fifth district facilities committee meeting, sorry, the, no, the twenty-fifth district facilities committee meeting minutes, the May second study session. We have bills and checks for Ed Fund, the tune of two-point-two million dollars, O&amp;M Fund bills for three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars, transportation fund bills for two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars, working cash bonds for a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars, the indoor aquatic center for two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents, school facility occupancy tax for two-hundred and, sorry, three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, tort for a hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars, payroll, salary, and benefits for four-point-eight million dollars, Urbana middle education for a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. There is a long list of personnel items, including one significant retirement, Jill Quisenberry from Wiley, a long-term teacher in this district is retiring this summer. There's an inner fund loan from working cash to operation and maintenance fund for eight-hundred thousand dollars, and eleven-point-six is a resolution authorizing and directing the sale of disposal of property. There is a large list of, of library books that are, we are weeding from DPW. And eleven-point-seven is the appointment of authorized IMRF agent. We're asking to approve Kendra K. Good to serve as the district's authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, IMRF. Does anybody wish to move any one of these consent agenda items off the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
I do have a question regarding the books, what happens to all those books? There are hundreds and hundreds of them.
After the board's approval, we typically, they would just be donated or recycled, depending. We try to get market value for items that have a value, but depending on the age of the book and the conditions of the book, that may not be possible.
Excuse me, are they ever offered to families, to children in the, in the district?
That's quite possible, that would be up to the buildings themselves to do so. Once they're not, once the board has approved them to not be our property anymore, that may be what the librarians try to do. I can confirm that and bring back more information.
Thank you. Any further questions? A roll call, please.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Secretary Langendorf? Yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palowski?
Yes, twelve-point-one are our gifts. LGBTQIA and ASH Committee received a donation totaling one-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars from the McKinley Foundation, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, and Dixon Graphics, six-hundred-and-four dollars. Tom England donated a con director trumpet to the district valued at three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Urbana Middle School received a total of seven thousand dollars to purchase new mats for PE. Donations were made by the UMS PTA, two-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and the UMS Student Council, four-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Jean Huddleston donated five-hundred dollars to CU Early Program to help purchase bottles, blankets, diapers, and other various supplies to support the program. The following donated to the Evelyn Burnett Underwood Music Assistance Fund, Felisa Reynolds, two-hundred dollars, and Friends of Urbana Neighborhood, two thousand dollars. Meg Freivigel donated five-hundred dollars to Urbana High School. Ann Heinzey-Silves and Albert Veloci donated a hundred dollars to the Lille Library in memory of a former volunteer, Sue Keller. Is there a motion to accept the gifts and send out thank yous? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Oh.
Aye.
I was just going to say, that's Meg Freivigel.
Thank you for helping me with that. Appreciate it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twelve-dot-two is the appointment of the 2023 Illinois Association of School Boards' Delegate Assembly. Nomination of a board member to serve as the IASB 2023 Delegate Assembly will be requested. So, traditionally, Brenda has held this position for many years, so in November, at the Joint Annual Conference, a member from every school board is allowed to come in and vote on resolutions before that body, that basically directs the Illinois Association of School Boards to usually support legislation or encourage legislation in Springfield. So, right now, referendums are being collected by the bodies, that we, we as a district could propose them for whatever, for example, a good one would be to encourage the body to support increased funding for school-based early childhood programs. That would be, I think, a one that we could potentially request be considered by the greater body, but we need a person from this, this body who's going to be going to Chicago in November for the Joint Annual Conference to represent the district in that vote. So, this is a request for, for volunteer.
Does that have to be decided tonight? I'm not sure about attendance with me.
Okay. All right, well then the chair will entertain a motion to definitely postpone this, this action item to the June twentieth board meeting. We might have another board member at the band then too, so. I usually do something else that, that day, but I may, I may guess I could do if no one else really wants to. But, this, this, this postponement until June twentieth, is there a motion to definitely postpone till June twentieth?
Sure, I'll move the postponement to the twentieth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, this will reappear in two meetings. Twelve-dot-three is salary and benefits allocation for non-union support staff and district administrators. The actual, yeah, the memo, sorry, I'll have in front of me. My apologies. Please go ahead, Rita Cady.
I'll read the memo. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following increases. For non-union support staff, that they receive an average increase of seven-point-seven-six percent in FY24 as follows. A dollar fifty per hour rate increase for positions with hourly rates below seventeen dollars an hour, and a one-dollar and a one-dollar rate increase or 4.5%, whichever is more, for positions with hourly rates above $17 an hour. An additional 10 cents per hour be given for years of service between zero to two years, 20 cents per hour for zero to three years of service, and 30 cents per hour for six-plus years of service. And that administrative staff receive an average increase of 4.5%. The cost to the district will be approximately $418,000 from the education fund, and $89,000 from the operations and maintenance fund. And I did receive one question from a board member via email this morning that I'd like to answer tonight with the full board, and it was, what was the division, the percentage allocation of the $418,000 between support staff and administrators? And that $418,000 is 52% or $218,000 for support staff, and 48% are $200,000 for administrators.
Any, any, is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion?
I have a question, what is that, first, which are the not, I know this is late, my, I'm really foggy right now.
Who are the non-union?
Yeah.
That would be our clerical, custodians, facilities, maintenance warehouse.
Okay, and between the raise for the teachers and teacher assistants, is comparative as much as the raise they're having, the rest of the stuff?
The raise for the teachers in the next contract is 6.67%, and the ask for administrators is 4.5%.
When was the last time the administrator got a raise?
Typically, it's been past practice for the board for administrators to get the same percentage raise as, as teachers. This is the first year in my memory where administrators have been at, the request for administrators has been less than the request for teachers.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I know there is a 5% cap year to year for administrative costs. This, this percentage increase, will it put us at risk of exceeding that for other expenditures that count as administrative expenses?
No, I don't think so, especially because one administrator is retiring at the end of the year, so our total administrative costs will actually be reduced next year when Linda Gibbons retires. And then that 5% will become an issue, you know, if that position were replaced. But I think with the ESAR, the person who's coordinating the ESAR grants, that position also goes away at the end of FY '24, so, and, and then we'll, at that point, fill the other jobs. So I think that in the end, no, that won't, I don't foresee that being an issue.
All right, thank you.
Could I also get clarification on who you list as an administrator? Is it principals, assistant principals, is it also people in central office? Yep.
All right, any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
No.
Member Hasanaka?
No.
Member, Secretary Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Polowski?
Yes, motion passed. And that's it for our agenda. There is no call for a future executive or special meeting superintendent's report.
Well, due to the lateness of the hour, we'll add this to the board update that goes out tomorrow. So it basically has some dates of all of our upcoming graduation, quickly eighth grade promotion, fifth grade promotions, online registration, we're seeing great attendance there, a reminder about physicals, summer meals. And we had some other UMS track athletes that qualify for state this weekend. And then the last slide, I believe, is just upcoming dates. So we'll put that in the board update that goes out tomorrow. We also have several FOIA requests, you want to split them, Paul? And I'll do, because it is an exclusive list. So I will do this first page. Check CU, any and all recordings, audio and or video of any public meeting which may have taken place April 18th. Check CU, FOIA logs that may exist for the years 2015 to now. Check CU, all FOIA officer training certifications for any FOIA officer who has served from year 2010 until now. Records sufficient to identify any person currently serving as FOIA officer or who assists in responding to FOIA requests. Also provide records sufficient to show how that person or persons was appointed as FOIA officer. Yuli Borishnikov, provide me with the board's policy on the goals and design of the district's program of education of English learners, if it exists. Check CU, any reports, memos, or test data regarding asbestos and or air quality in Wiley Elementary School, searched from 2017 until now. Janie Jordan, Data Research Partners LLC, copy of a listing of all Urbana School District 116 employees, first and last name, email address, title slash position, and primary campus department location. Urbana Way, copies of approved employment contracts and all amendments thereto for all persons currently holding district administrative positions of superintendent or assistant superintendent. The portion of this request related to superintendent shall include any approved employment contracts and or amendments that are expired from 10 years or less, or currently in force or not yet in force. The portion of this request related to the assistant superintendent shall include any approved employment contracts and amendments that are currently in force.
From check CU, all Open Meetings Act training certificates for any members of the Board of Education who is serving now or has served any time in the past five years. Check CU, records which show the names of any individuals or organizations employed or contracted by USD 116 to handle legal matters and the extent of their employment. Supply any employment agreements or contracts which have been in place, enforced for any of these individuals, no, or any time in 2023. Alexandra Akuski, equipped for equality information with regard to the school within the Champaign County Juvenile Detention Center. Yuli Borishnikov, provide the description of the screening process, the compositions of the screening group, the charge given to the members of the screening group, and the rubics on which the applications were scored. Check CU, copies of all notices issued by members of the USD 116 Board of Education of their intent, desire to attend any meetings telephonically or by any remote means. Christine Harper, Abigail Jacob, University of Kentucky, student directory information. Tom Schroder, any records or communications relating to the 2023 Facilities Planning Committee that individually or when combined identify the names of all survey screeners. Screeners' names can be redacted to preserve anonymity if the person's entire known relationship with the district is one or more of the following: parent or guardian of a district student, district classroom teacher, district taxpayer, or district resident. All other district employees and their immediate family members who were screeners should not be redacted. Screeners without a known relationship to the district shall not be redacted. A minimal set of records that provides a complete list is sufficient to satisfy my request. Tom Schroder records provided to the Board of Education members relating to the superintendent's progress toward the goals and criteria during the most recent board review of those goals under the attached contract. This review is most likely occurred during an annual review described in the reference contract section or during the recent contract renewal for the superintendent. And lastly, Tom Schroder, any records or communications relating to the 2023 Facilities Planning Committee that individually or when combined identify the names of all district employees invited to be survey screeners. These are all, these were all resolved, one way or the other. Board reports, I'll do one really quickly. We've got a few things that we have to, need to take care of as a board. Our sub-district four applications are, are due, are being published on their website to be put the.
We have not put that there yet, I wanted to, we haven't decided that as a board, so.
So, yeah, a suggestion from administration was to have the applications due by Friday, May 16th.
Twenty-six?
Thank you, I'm too tired. Friday, May 26th. And then we could either have a special meeting on Tuesday, June 13th for, for interviews, or we could try to do them in exact session after our next meeting on June 6th. If that runs this late, I would not advise that outcome.
Yes, right now we have one completed application turned in. So we could be doing an exact interviewing, just one person, if we don't get any additional applications in. Or we could, if it's the board's wish to plan a special meeting on Tuesday, June 13th, to do interviews.
Why don't we review the applications via email, and then have a meeting before the June meeting, as in on the 30th of May? So that way, that person could be sworn in at the beginning of the next meeting, and so then we go back to seven for the next meeting.
I, I'm going to be out of town for my 30th wedding anniversary around then. I'm sorry, man.
Well, then the 31st.
I'm, I'm out of.
Then June 1st.
I'm out of town until June 5th.
We'll just leave it empty.
Well, no, we can have this, it's perfectly apt to have a discussion, but I'm just saying that my availability is, is out between June 29th and, sorry, May 29th and June 5th. I don't know if anybody else has conflicts either.
I won't be here from June 1st to June 26th, I want to be in Mexico.
Oh, that's right.
I can bring my laptop and be online, but internet is not that stable where I'm going to be, the beach, so.
So you could participate in interviews via, like, if we have you on a Zoom, when we do, or something like that, you think? Or would a phone call work, maybe?
I can try, no promise, because I want to be, I can try, for sure.
Does anybody else have any, any conflicts for, for meetings over the next, I guess between now and the end of June? Well, why don't we shoot for the suggested schedule then, to try to seat the person? I mean, we try to have it, I guess, what's the agenda look like for June 6th, how, how big is it?
The 6th and the 20th are the meetings where we have all the school improvement plans. So they will be. 6th is heavier than the 20th, yes.
What about Monday, June 5th? I mean, I think Robbie would like to get this, this person seated before the next week, the next June meeting. So what about Monday, the 5th? If we have a special meeting just for the interview process?
That works, right? Yep.
Okay.
Ben? And then we can try to have Sid Lally call in and say, yeah, please, our time.
We could do 6, start a little earlier. I know Robbie has a hard time being here by 5:30, but I think.
Oh, we can, we can set that, we can set the time when Robbie's available to talk about it. But, all right, let's, let's shoot for June 5th then for, for interview session. And should we, when should we close applications?
I would like to close them at least by the 26th, we can close it a little earlier if you.
I'd rather keep, I'd rather keep the window open as long as possible.
That's what I was trying to do, yes.
Okay, so let's, let's do whatever we can to advertise it, really hard, talk to Catherine about throwing us all over social media.
We have been doing that, so.
Okay.
But we have not put an ending date, so we will do that. On June 5th?
I, I'll come back the 4th, so.
All right, and then we could seat the person on the 6th, is what you're. We've, we've been posting the date, so everyone knows to come to 2/11 here. So we've been putting that date out.
Okay, well, thanks.
Yes, 2/11 North Race is what we have posted.
All right. We'll make sure that's correct.
Yes, we do, Ricardo.
Thank you. All right, any other board reports? Sorry for the, the late hour. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're adjourned, so thank you.